Um, Richard. I'm ready to go. Okay, bye, everybody. Pledge of allegiance, please, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a purpose just for all.
Okay, so before we really get going on the meeting, we need to reorganize the board. At this point, I will be stepping down as chair. And do I have a motion for the chair?
Mr. Chair, I will make a motion to recommend Mike Esteho as the chair of the Senate.
I'll second that.
Motion made a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Do I do the second one, or just now it's him? Now it's him, okay. We'll just change chairs and tags.
I'll switch them.
Thanks, Sarah. I had to get my two waters. Those are changed.
Thank you, fellow board members, for your confidence. I'll now take a nomination, Amina, a motion for nomination for vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Mr. Tigges for vice chair.
For second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Five zero zero.
Thank you.
Jim is vice chair.
I don't know, am I moving again?
Yep.
Nope, you guys moving?
Or you're going there?
Doesn't matter.
Mr. Chair, were the votes four zero? Or was, or the voting for themselves?
Five zero, I did. Thank everyone, that's our annual reorganization after the town election. And congratulations to all the winners in our election this year.
Mr. Chair, can I make a comment?
You may.
On the reorg, so something agenda related. So, I just wanted to make a comment that I feel like it's important for this board and for the town that we kind of stick to that precedent and that precedent and that consistency of having a predictable leadership transition. That won't always be the case, for whatever reason, you know, not everybody wants to be chair or vice chair, but I think it just shows a trust and a confidence that we have in each other and that will hopefully reflect back within the community and they'll have trust and confidence in us. So, just wanted to make that comment. You know, we're not always going to agree on everything, certainly. We don't always align, but even when we disagree, there is a respect and a trust within this board that I really appreciate, so. And I think that shows that in maintaining that continuity, I think it shows, it's an important sign that we have our strategic priorities and goals in mind. So, just thank you to my fellow board members and staff for helping us model that leadership for this team.
Here, here.
Well said.
Well said. Well said, thank you, member colleague. All right, item seventy, we have some appointments with the DPW.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, fellow board members. I'm here with Anthony Simone, Brian White, with a couple DPW recommendations for hire. I'll let Anthony take it from here.
Thank you. We've got two tonight, unfortunately, the first one was unable to make it here, so we'll do him first and then we'll do the person who's actually here second. So, first up, after conducting interviews for the special heavy equipment operator slash labor position in our highway division, I'm pleased to recommend Thomas Craig for this role. Mr. Craig currently holds a CDL driver's license, class A, as well as a two A and four E hoisting license. He's actively working towards obtaining the remaining required licenses. His experience as both a groundsman and equipment operator with Wilmington DPW, running a catch basin truck, makes him a great addition to our team. Additionally, his extensive expertise in snow plowing and snow removal enhances his qualifications for the role and significantly strengthens his value to the DPW. I believe Thomas's background, skills, and knowledge will make him a valuable asset to our highway division. I recommend his start date contingent upon the completion of pre-employment requirements be set for May 5th, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make sure my microphone was working so you'd all be able to hear me.
Oh, excellent.
So, on behalf of Town Administrator Paul Sagorino, I'm recommending for approval Thomas Craig to the position of special heavy equipment operator. I ask the board to waive their fifteen day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, abstained? Five zero, congratulations.
Thank you. The next one we have is Loudon Bolster, and after conducting interviews, I'd like to recommend him for this role. Mr. Bolster currently holds a two A hoisting license and is also actively working towards obtaining the remaining licenses. His experience with JBO Enterprises, combined with his familiarity with skids, seers, and backhoes, also enhances his qualifications. Additionally, his expertise in snow plowing and snow removal further qualifies him for this role. I believe Loudon's background, skills, and knowledge will make him a valuable asset to our highway division, and I recommend his start date contingent upon pre-employment requirements be set for April 28th.
Mr. Chairman, again, on behalf of Town Administrator Paul Sagorino, he is recommending for appointment Loudon Bolster to the position of special heavy equipment operator, and we ask the board to waive fifteen day waiting period.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair is also aye, five zero. Congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Brian, before you go, Anthony, I'm just curious, how many, how are we doing getting applicants for these positions? Only because we have, you know, with other positions in town, we try to see the best way of recruiting and who, how many people are applying, how many, I'm just curious, how many applicants have we had in for these positions?
I mean, we've a couple, I mean, they come in waves, it's hard to say. We've been, we haven't been full staff for, you know, quite a while, I think probably since I took over two months maybe total. So, it's kind of hard to say because they kind of continually roll in. It definitely isn't what it was ten, fifteen years ago where everyone's knocking down on the door. Many don't have a lot of the licenses, which is why recently we had implemented some, particularly with the CDL, since the federal law has changed, required extra classes that we provided some some leeway in getting the licenses and then some assistance to get the licenses itself. So, we're working with what's coming in, but I don't think it's, it definitely isn't what it was.
It's not a DPW specific question, just trying to, I'm going to inquire with other departments on how we're doing as a town on getting applicants for all of our positions. But thank you for the update, also, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Jim. Next item on the agenda is seventy-one, you have an update on the Route 3A resurfacing, Brian?
Yes, so we met for the, you know, I guess, second kickoff meeting with DOT last week, and they gave us kind of a schedule of what the Newport, their contractor, has in mind to finish up, and it looks, it appeared, they're trying to make a big push to really finish this up by midsummer. So, as I'm sure some people have seen, they've already been out kind of starting more sidewalk work and granite carving work. So, the rest of April, they'll be focusing on that, installing the traffic, the updated traffic signal crossing at, around Pontos, Great Pines. And then they'll be prepping, you know, the rest of the driveways for April. And then May and June will be the real bulk of the work that everyone's been waiting for. They are, what their plan is, they're planning to do everything at night because of the, obviously because of the traffic. And I know unfortunately, there is some residential areas, but what they're hoping to do, they're proposing twelve hour shifts throughout the night, six PM to six AM, in the hopes of just getting it done in as fast a time as possible. So, in May, they expect ten nights total from, they'll be starting in Bilreka at Cook Street and working their way south. They expect the milling to take ten nights, two weeks, barring weather, whatnot. Once it's milled, they'll have to adjust all the castings up to the two inch reveal grade that the top surface is going to be in thickness. They'll have to install traffic light loops. When the surface is milled, they'll be, that's when they put in any of the berm mix. So, they'll have to put down a berm pad and then install the berm, so that, once it's milled, they'll have about, you know, a couple of weeks to a month's worth of prep work before they can install the top course. And then in June is when they're hoping to be ready for the top course. That, again, is going to, they're hoping that it'll be ten nights, same timeframe, six PM to six AM, at the end of each night. Kind of the process for, that they expect is they will, in one night, there's going to be, the road's going to be broken up into three sections, the center line will be one, and then the left gutter line, right gutter line. Every night, they'll just go as far as they can with milling or paving, and then the next night, they'll go back, and so they'll kind of, they're not going to get too far ahead of themselves. During, you know, they know they got to keep the access points for the businesses open, so the only time that the businesses will be blocked is basically when the paver's in front of it. So, five, ten minutes after, once the paver's gone, they are stating that they'll be able to get the cars, vehicles in and out of the businesses. At the end of each night, they'll be putting down temporary lane markings, and they will also be putting down temporary mix around the structures to try to prevent flat tires and blowouts. They're not going to do, they're not proposing to do all the structures, only the structures that are kind of in the travel lane. So, one thing that whoever's listening should keep in mind, they're going to, they're going to stripe the temporary marking as one lane, the controversial one lane. They're not proposing to put mix on, around the catch basins and the gutter line. So, if anyone tries to drive it as two lanes, they're probably going to hit two inch high catch basin casting, and so I would highly suggest everyone to try to just drive it as one lane with the temporary markings down. After that, the end of June and into July, they're hoping to do, get the permanent line markings down, any loam, project cleanup, and then the installation of the road signs.
Guessing we have, may I have some questions from the board? Anybody have any questions?
I have a list.
Go ahead, Nick.
Not, not, Brian, that I expect you to have all the answers right now. You're not from the state. I get and appreciate that. Sorry, run me through the timeline again, because you said May, they're, they have ten nights, they're going to do all the milling.
Yes.
Okay, so all, so from Cook all the way to the high school?
Yes.
Okay. And then in June, they're going to be doing all the paving? Oh, I mean, I was the casting raising and then the paving, but we're saying this is going to run clean through June?
Yes, yep, sometime, probably, you know, I think they're thinking mid, sometime around mid-May. They are going to try to get the message boards out when they have a more certain date. You know, they're thinking like maybe a week's notice once, once everything's firmed up. But, you know, call it maybe mid-May for the milling, mid-June for the paving.
Okay. I just got to, so selfishly, for the Fourth of July parade, I got a plan.
Yep.
How the road's going to be and if it's even traversable for folks, or how messy the sidewalks are going to be, like I got to think about that now, if we're going to plan for any of that, so selfish question. A question, if you could take it back to the state, I'm more curious why they aren't going to curbing everything? It seems like they're picking and choosing how the sidewalks are being managed. I assume that's a funding thing, but I'd love some clarity on it. We've heard from some residents who are like, well, jeez, they did Bilreka and they just did granite everywhere, why aren't we doing that here? So, I'd love to get some clarity around that. And then, this isn't really even for you, this is really for the board, you know, I think that we should probably talk to VP Traffic for at least May, what it means to shore up extra bodies on the highly trafficked quote-unquote side streets, Skilton, Fox Hill, Upland Mill. Folks are going to avoid that milled road altogether because they don't want damage to their car, they're going to be spilling in the neighborhoods. So, even though there's not going to be construction happening during peak traffic times, they're still not going to be on, you know, traveling that road for fear of damage in their car. So, I'd love to talk about that, and even to go so far as to consider a temporary removal of the time conditions around Church Street, if it means getting folks off of 3A and moving into, you know, onto South Beffer Street, yeah, Beffer Street. You know, just for the board's consideration, I think that we should be thinking ahead. I know that part of the budget had accounted for additional details, but I'd love to know, like, where they're going to be and, you know, how we're going to work to mitigate that. But that's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any?
Good question.
Jimmy?
Notification to EMS surrounding towns, does that fall under the state? Because we get a lot of EMS traffic, Tulee on Cambridge Street, all day. Is that notification the responsibility of the state?
Yeah, so it should be DOT, however, both police departments, Bilreka and Burlington, have been in the loop, so I'm sure they'll be doing reach out on their own end. And then, you know, with the, with the message boards, we're going to, as soon as we have a schedule as well, we'll do the full media, you know, media blitz, post it on the website. But, but the specific reach out, I think that you're referring to, would be on, you know, DOT slash the contractor.
Because to follow up what Nick said, you may see EMS take alternate routes as well, middlesex turn by, would not affect areas that normally aren't affected, Francis Wyman.
Right.
So, it's just a question on that, I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Jimmy. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Brian, just going back to the timeline again, and maybe I missed this, but did you say estimated completion for the whole project is midsummer?
Yes, yep, they're open end of July to be completely done and out of here.
Okay, and it's being milled in May, and if I got the timeline correct, it's going to be milled, it's going to be exposed essentially for about a month?
Yeah, yep, weather dependent, I mean, I'm sure they're hoping to do it sooner. But as I said, the, I mean, typically, the raised castings are the issue, and they will be putting mix around them.
Okay.
The ones in the travel lane.
And when it's milled like that, are there temporary lines that go on that, or no?
Yes.
There are, okay.
Yeah, every night, at the end of the night is when they'll, they'll be putting the mix around the raised, well, you know, when they're raising the castings at the end of the day, they will put the mix around that, and then the, after, at the end of the night, after milling, is when they'll install the temporary markings.
Okay. And then in terms of notifying the community, will utilize our, what's it called, reverse nine one one?
Yep.
And then, you know, there's a lot of people who travel that road that are within Burlington, they're all over the place, so I think you mentioned it, will there be highway signs in the area about, you know, times and how long and that kind of thing?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think their plan is to leave them a little bit vague, just in case schedules change, but it'll be about a week's notice and it'll, it'll say something along the lines of, in the next, you know, couple of weeks or week or two. The, you know, we, when we put the messaging out, we could, we could certainly try to get a better timeframe for the reverse nine one ones, but the message boards will, you know, will be a little bit vague. I believe they're planning on one at each end, again, this is, you know, they didn't, they didn't have this completely firmed up, but one at each end of Cambridge Street, they discussed putting one somewhere on Wind Street for anyone traveling on Wind Street, and then perhaps on Route 62.
And then, I think Nick may have referred to this, we have gotten some folks reach out who have seen the work so far, even though it's been kind of minimal and kind of prep work to this point, and saying that maybe the quality isn't up to what they would hope for in one of the most main roads in our town. And I know this is a state managed project, and it's really more of a maintenance project and not an upgrade, but is there any communication with the state about those concerns?
Yeah, so I think, I think what people are noticing is there's a lot, I mean, it's, it's, it's active construction project, and they were under, I know their, their schedule changed quite a bit throughout last, last summer. They, they were initially planning to have, you know, their original plan was to pave, was to break it up into paving Bilreka and Burlington, kind of year one, year two. So, because of the subcontractors and everything, their, their schedule kept changing, and then at the end of the, end of the fall, they were under a time crunch to kind of get everything buttoned up for winter, so that plowing of sidewalks could be done. So, there's only, there's, there's a lot of temporary pavement out there. There's, there's no permanent pavement yet, so it's, anything that's been put down is not the final coat. And, and obviously, they haven't put any loam down, so I know that any of the grading and the shoulders are going to look, you know, very unesthetic. A lot of the current sections don't really have berm, so the, once you get, you know, a four inch high berm with properly graded loam, it's, I think it's going to look a lot, a lot different, a lot better. And I know to, to Nick's point, with the, with the state has, so Bilreka, basically what the state is claiming and has claimed throughout the public hearing process is that it's a roadway maintenance project, not an upgrade. I think a perception that people might get is, in Bilreka, a lot of the, a lot of, almost everything pre-existing condition was already granite. If you go on Google Street View and you go down the whole, whole stretch, I mean, it's granite, the whole, the whole stretch. It doesn't look like it because they must have done a bunch of overlays, so in some sections, it's, it's the granite, if you look on Google Street View, is flush with, with the pavement. So, this project, it looks like they're getting new granite, but in reality, they're just raising, resetting the granite to the proper height. And in the course of doing that, any granite that's broken or they can't, you know, it's set in concrete, so if they can't reset it properly, it's going to be new granite, and so that's kind of, I think, what people are noticing.
Sure.
That's all, thank you so much for answering my question.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yep. Brian, we all got an email from a resident in town with a million questions on it, and I'm not going to go through all those questions. I'm just curious if you got that same email, Lynn, do we know if he got that email from that one resident on, just off?
He was on it, yeah, he was on it. Sean Griffin on Friday.
Yes, yep.
All right, just want to make sure that you got that email, because he has a million questions, and some of them were already asked tonight, but there's a bunch of other ones that weren't, weren't asked, and I'm not going to go through them, only because there's, there's a list, and it's pretty big, would be here for an extra hour, but as long as you got that and we can reply to, Mr. Griffin, that would be awesome.
Sure.
At least, because he's got a vocal voice in town, he talks to a lot of people, and I know it would get out there to a lot of other people that would just be watching the show, so if we could do that, that'd be great, all right?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Brian, appreciate that, thank you. Also, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Yeah, Brian, about that email, is that, since it's a state project, is that our job to respond to him, or is that something we should make sure that Ken has someone respond to him? I don't know how that works.
It's a good question, I mean, it is in Burlington, so I have no problems responding.
Okay.
Again, I mean, I know part of the, part of the, I think, the anger, the frustration is that it is a state project, and so, you know, I'm sure my response, being that it's somewhat out of our hands, unless perhaps we wanted to add our own funding to fund upgrades, you know, I'm happy to, I'm happy to respond, I'm, I'll pass, I've already passed it along to DOT, and so maybe he might not be the most happy with my response, but hopefully DOT will reach out or, you know.
Yes, that would be great, I just want to make sure he does get a response, and if he's not satisfied, then I'm sure he'll come back to us. I actually did reach out to Ken because I was concerned with some of the stuff you mentioned, and Ken echoed us all of the same things that you said, that there's nothing inferior going on, and it's a, you know, it's not an upgrade, it's a restoration, so, yeah, as long as we get something back to him, and I'm sure if that's not sufficient, he'll get back to us. All right, thanks, thanks, gentlemen. Thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, item seventy-two, Disabilities Access Committee appointment.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, Mr. Chairman, I know you have a copy of the memo from Chris about what they're looking to do here today, I'll let Chris explain it, but they're looking to make a couple of appointments, and these appointments are select board appointments, so you need to get a motion from one of the members after Chris explains what's going on.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone, it's kind of a bittersweet moment. Tom Carlson, who has been on the board, I think, since its inception, since 1999, Tom's retired now, spends a lot of time down in Florida in Aruba, so great for Tom, just means that he's not up here a whole lot, and Tom is looking to step down from the board, just because the participation is an issue with him not being in the state. So, with that being said, our board looked at it, we needed to fill that gap, and actually, it was our chairman, John Kuna, who couldn't be here tonight because he is on a Mississippi cruise with his wife. John would like to be here, is very good friends with Dominic, and he brought it to the board, and the board said, why don't we bring in Dominic, see if he's the right fit? So, this is Dominic Marcelino. Dominic is the president and founder of the Disabled and Limbless Veterans, is a 501(c)(3) organization that's headquartered here in Massachusetts. You've probably heard of like the Marine Corps League, the American Legion, Dominic started this from the ground. It is a very successful organization, especially here locally, which we like to keep things local. Dominic is a Marine, and that's not why he's here. Dominic's probably one of the hardest working people that I know within the veterans community, and if you don't know, he's a triple amputee from, from Vietnam. Dominic has done amazing things with disabled veterans, and we thought that he would be a great fit for the Disability Access Commission. So, we brought Dominic in, he graciously
Accepted.
Accepted our invitation, and so what we're doing is we're coming to you through the town administrator to hope that you would appoint Dominic to the Disability Access Commission.
Any questions or discussion? Sinizio?
So, this, this is a select board appointee, so you would get a motion from?
I get a motion now?
I just want to make one comment.
Sure.
I don't know Mr. Marcelino, but I've seen him at so many events, and he should, he's an inspiration to me, and I don't even know the gentleman, but to see how active he is should be an inspiration to others, because like a letter says, he could lead a quiet, stagnant life, but you know what? No way.
It's not in his nature.
Not what I, from what I've seen, so I could think of a better person for this committee, that's all. Just wanted to recognize.
Any other comments?
I'll just take a moment to say that obviously, you know, Mr. Carlson has done amazing things with the DAC, you know, and just want to express on behalf of the board, our appreciation for his work over the last near thirty years, you know, and Mr. Marcelino, we wish you the best as a, as a member, so thank you for stepping up, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with that, I'll make a motion that we appoint Mr. Dominic Marcelino to the DAC.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Five zero zero.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
So, we do have one more. A few years ago, and Mike, you could talk to this, we thought it would be a good idea, just like we have a selectmen represented to the DAC, we thought that it would be a fantastic idea to have a school liaison, or someone within the operations of the school, since we do work a lot with the schools. of the school. Since we do work a lot with the schools, we reached out to Robert Kuna. And we were thinking, hey, is there someone below you that might have a little bit of time to, to be a part of the board so that we can make that seamless gap in between the town side of things and the school side of things? And he said, you know what? I'll find time. Our commission has worked a lot with Mr. Kuna and the person that was there before him in regards to trying to get into the schools to make sure that the accessibility of the schools is a priority for not only our commission, but for the town. It has worked out. And I think that it will work significantly better with him being on the board and him being at the meetings. So with that being said, he couldn't be here tonight, but through the town administrator, the board would like to recommend Robert Kuna as a potential appointee through the, through the select board.
So, Mr. Chairman, I can just add to that, that the board is governed by Chapter 40, Section 8J. And the membership just needs to be within a certain number. And appointing Mr. Kuna would not jeopardize that in any way. Make up the, the committee would still satisfy the statute.
Okay.
So again, this would be a, a select board appointee.
Okay. And as the select board representative to DAC, as Chris mentioned, I think there's no better person that would be able to tell us about the facility needs of the schools than the school's facility manager. So I thought it was a great idea. And Bob's a great guy. And I was very happy Bob was willing to, to step up and join the commission. So I think it's a great idea. Any other comments or questions? Okay. Then I guess we'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Mr. Bob Kuna to the DAC as well.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose abstain? 5-0-0.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
All right. Moving on, item 73 is an approval for Baseball Softball Association for their parade.
Mr. Chairman, if we just ask, if there's someone online that's looking to?
Is there someone online representing Burlington Baseball Softball?
No hands raised, Mr. Chairman. I, I think the board may be familiar with.
Yeah. So we're familiar with this request. This is the second year that Burlington Baseball has done this. They do the parade route from 61 Center Street all the way up to Simons Park. And it's going to be at eight o'clock this year. We did it last year. It was great. I'm glad they're renewing this tradition. And I'm especially excited this year because Brody would be marching in it. So does anyone have any comments or about this?
It's been more than two years because I marched in it yearly.
No, no, no. We used to do it back in the day, but they've only, they only restarted it last year. And I'm so excited for it. So anyone have any objection? Any discussion?
I will just note that we did get an email from Bryan Brothers stating that they have already been in contact with fire and police and to, to help with the escorting the kids down the street. Hopefully they get good weather.
All right. We'll take a motion then.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the permit for the BBSA parade on 4/26 from 8:00 AM to 8:30 AM from 61 Center to Simons Park.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose abstain? 5-0-0. Play ball. Item number 74, we have, I think, an update from Mr. Genino.
Yeah.
An approval required for a bond anticipation note.
Good evening to the board. Before you this evening, we have the, two bonds. One is the, a general obligation bond, 25-year note in your backup. It's for $7,865,000. And that's, that's for the WMRA work that's being done. It's just a carry. Some of it was on a bond anticipation note, which is only for one year. We've rolled that into the long term. Second, the second vote of approval is for $2.5 million for a one-year bond anticipation note. And that is for the fields, the middle school fields and 500, that's for $2 million and 500,000.
Water means.
Water means. Thank you. The information's before you. I don't know if you need more information. I can keep going, but sometimes I'm told I speak too, too long. So.
I'm never the one telling them that on record. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to add, this is quite a milestone for us. We're permanently bonding the last phase of the MWRA connection project that's been started before I worked, started working here. So this is big news for us. And as you know, you've heard from Brian before, that project came in significantly less than originally thought of through the good works of all sorts of different departments on grants from, on mass work grants and some of the other things. So I just wanted to acknowledge that milestone.
For 2B?
This would be the final, would be permanently borrowing for 2A and fully borrowing 2B.
I can tell you our net, net interest on this, the 25-year bond is 3.97%. And that ranges from five to four over the life of the 25-year note. That the last time we went out for long-term bonding was in fiscal year 22. And the net interest calculation there was 3.165%. And it was around a 4.5% obligation bond where this is between five to four over the 25 years. For the BN, the net interest is a 3.033%. Last year, for an $8.9 million bond anticipation note, the net interest cost is 3.6%. And for fiscal year 23, it was 3.23%. So there's not, hasn't been much swing. A lot of that has to do with the AAA rating the town continues to maintain through standard and pores.
Mr. Chairman, if, well, there are, I don't need, I don't need that either.
Okay. You sure?
Yep. Well, I, what I was going to say was that's quite a bit of good news, given what we've been using for our long-term projections for Fox Hill and for the police station and eventually for the high school, has been 5% on 25 years. And this is, as Gary said, 4%. So that's good news. They've been higher than this in other places before, right before we went out, another town, AAA town around here went out and also came in around the forest. So that's, that's good. It's come down a little bit and hopefully doesn't move from there. Or if it does, it goes down.
Do we have any questions from the board on this?
Oh, I'd just like to make a comment.
Sure.
As far as the water, the MWRA, I can't believe it's finally coming to an end.
Right.
After all this time. I think I was here in the very beginning of it. And now we've finally got our last one coming in, which is like Mr. Sinizio said, it's absolutely incredible. It's finally, finally going to happen. Because I remember a long time ago, probably nine, 10 years ago, when it was just starting up, it was crazy to even think we were going to do, possibly do this. And now all of a sudden it's coming to the end. So I couldn't be prouder of this board and other boards that were on, on the, on this to get it through. So the staff has done such a great job with all the bonding issues on this. So thank you.
Yeah. I think you'll find that many people don't understand how long it's taken. And it was this board who decided to make that effort. And here we are, it's come to fruition. So congratulations to the board.
I don't have to answer the question. When we get in it, when we get in it.
Big credit goes to John Sanchez, too, and Brian and all the DPW, the team at DPW for all of their hard work on this over the years. Any other questions or comments on this?
Just on the format, Gary, you say we need two votes?
No, the, the, there was a motion in your package.
I thought you said two, right?
No, there's two different, included in the vote, which was also attached, was the vote of the board, the select board for the 7.865, 25-year general obligation bond and 2.5 million bond anticipation note.
I just wanted to clarify that because there was one motion and not two.
Correct.
I just have one question.
Sure.
Gary, thanks for coming tonight. The 2.5 million bond that's going to the fields and water means?
Yes.
What is the breakdown of how much is going?
$2 million to the fields and 500,000 to the water.
And is that specifically for the Marshall, Marshall Simons fields?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the board? With that said, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the votes prepared by bond council in the form presented to this meeting, which votes, among other things, make the formal award of the bonds and notes to the respective purchases of the bonds and the notes, and approve the interest rates, maturities, and other details of the bonds in the notes as determined in the competitive sales held on April 2, 2025, and shall be incorporated in the minutes of this meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Oppose abstain? 5-0-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Genino.
Thanks, Gary.
And congratulations to the chair and vice chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is an approval for a warrant article for town common walkways in Bantstand.
Good evening. Right. Thank you very much for having me. I, we have had the, oh, Brendan Egan, Director of Parks and Recreation, we have had the gazebo on our tenure capital plan for quite some time and kind of moved it down, did some small repairs here and there. And then the walkways have also been on our, on our capital plan and moved them down as well. But we're getting to a point where we are going to need to renovate both before they deteriorate any further. The walkways are, I'm going to guess, original to, or at least 40 years old. They were done when I started with the town in 99. They were already done. A few years ago, maybe five or six years ago, we did two walkways coming from Center Street down to the gazebo, so straight across from Town Hall, and then across from what is now Youth and Family Services, down around the Rotary Fountain in concrete. And they've held the, held up to truck day, to maintenance on the common, emptying trash barrels, foot traffic, which let's hope they, they do. But all the heavy equipment that's, that's gone over them as well. So what we've proposed is to replace approximately 13,350 square feet of existing asphalt sidewalks with new concrete sidewalks. The work would include matching the size and shape and elevation of the existing walkways and install new handicap accessible walkway from the inner octagon, we'll say, circle to the gazebo, to approximately the, the spot where the current stairs are, and then creating a pad for a future lift, if that is so desired. I know there is a, there is a diagram up on the screens here that show all the yellow walkways are what will be redone. The existing concrete walkways are not highlighted. And then in red, we show, it's a very rudimentary drawing, where the approximate area of where the walkway would be. So it would kind of be at the end of the walkway that comes down from the veterans section. And they would create a new walkway that would come straight across to the gazebo. We did go out, asked for a quote from a con, a concrete contractor, the total cost to do all the walkways, including removing them, forming them, doing them in sections at a time, and then regrading around the, creating the, regrading after they're done. And then the new walkway came to $263,250. And then we also asked for, from a contractor, a local contractor that was recommended, that could handle this work, to give us an idea to renovate the gazebo. And this work would be removing all of the, so let me start. The roof in the, in the support, in the, the roof structure is fine. The four by six posts that are around the perimeter, holding up the roof are starting to rot out at the bottom. This is a job bigger than our, our staffs can handle. So we spoke with a contractor who could do this type of work. They will remove, support the roof, remove the existing supports, one at a time, going around and replacing them with new four by six support posts. They will remove all the existing railings. Those are not pressure treated. Those are all, have been stained white over the years and, and restained and repainted a number of times. Those would all be removed. And a new header board around the top, a two by 10 header board will be put in. Right now there's some decorative spindles that are up around the top of the gazebo. So above that, we will replace that with a two by 10, pressure treated board all the way, boards all the way around and then covered in PVC. The railings, as I mentioned, will be removed. There are nine-foot sections between the posts. Standard PVC railing come in eight-foot sections. So a four-foot post, mid-post will be put in, in each section to allow us to use eight-foot sections to go four feet in on each side. And you'd have the difference made up on, on the center post. So it would be commercial-grade vinyl railings all the way around, new stairs coming up, new stringers, put in pressure treated, and then composite decking on those, and also composite railings, AZEC Premier composite railings will be put in there. All of this work, we received a quote for $46,599. So I'm coming tonight to talk about the project. It's something that I think the rec, well, I know the Recreation Commission supports, and we're looking for support of the, of the select board. As a joint project, you, the select board oversees the common. We do the maintenance. So it's really the decision of the select board. But I will say that the Recreation Commission supports this project, knowing that it is the centerpiece of town. There are some definite safety concerns that need to be addressed. And an opportunity to make all of the sidewalks on the common accessible and match and bring them up to date, as well as renovating the common and getting access, an accessible pathway to the common, with the idea that in the future, we could have a lift, if so needed, to bring a person with a disability up onto the gazebo. And then replace all of the rotting wood and supports on the common with pressure treated four by six posts and four by four posts for the mid-railings, and then PVC and AZEC trim everywhere else to protect it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add to that, that this is a project that's been on the capital plan for a while, started conversations some time ago. Anybody that's walked over there on the asphalt walkways know that they're not very flat and not easy to traverse. And the funding source for this is, it's in our pay-as-you-go warrant article, Article 4, which is where we pay from free cash stuff to keep them off the debt schedule. This would be part of that article and fits into the total that's shared by the town and the school, which you'll see as we talk through them. That's just over $6 million. So this is, that's the funding source for this.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the board?
Yes. Really no questions. So a few years ago, with this, not this board, the last board, we actually took out all the shrubbery that was around it because it was so bad. It was just terrible looking. And this project has been in the works for how many years now? A long time, right?
Yes, five, at least five years, pre-COVID.
I totally agree with this project. I think that, I think that the cement walkways would look, make the common look better than what it is. And I love the way it looks, trust me. I think the gazebo needs to be done at this point. I think there's awesome safety hazards up there. I think that by doing this over with the chairlift eventually going in, maybe not this, this particular. going in, maybe not this, this particular warrant article, but the next one, I really believe that it needs to be done. It is the center point of town. It is something that everyone goes to for high school graduations. They put that red carpet down still. They, they go up there for all the pictures, the weddings that are up there. People go up there all summer long. You have bands playing up there. The question I have is, is, so underneath, there's a lot of electrical stuff underneath that. And I remember the days of Doug Gillingham having to crawl underneath there and throw switches and stuff like that. Well, you won't have to be crawling under there anymore, will you?
No, when we upgraded the electrical a few years ago, that was upgraded as well. There is a sub-panel under there, so we can, you know, limit just the gazebo electric if we had to.
Okay. So is that, is that something we're looking at doing? Just limit the gazebo at one point, and the rest of the common at another point?
Sometimes we do, yes.
Okay. All right, great. So I'm in 100% favor of this. I think it's something that the town could really use, especially with our new signage coming in, being up front. And then we're gonna, that's, the facade is gonna look really good. I think the gazebo being done over and repainted and, and all new technology, I'll call it, to going up there, you know, no more, no more hammer and nails, a few of them, but not a lot. So I can't say enough good things about this project. Right?
Thanks, Jim. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Brendan, for bringing this. I agree, it needs to be done. My question is on the, the request, estimated cost. It's listed as 350. The estimates that we got come to about 310. So I know we tend to round up and leave a little buffer there, but that seems like a lot compared to what we usually do. So I'm wondering where that came from, that 40,000?
With, with the unknown in bidding, because this will have to go out to bid, and the economy, prices jumping, I want to make sure we have enough money to do it. Anything that is not spent will be returned. It won't be used for anything else.
Sorry to add to that. That's, you know, a little more than 10%, but not 15%. And that's in the ballpark of contingencies.
Okay. Yeah, I was just looking at like some of the other free cash warrant articles and comparing it, and there are 8% to 10%. This is 13%. So it just seemed a little bit high to me. So that's my only comment. Oh, that's not my only comment. So for the walkways, are we making them wider?
They will all be at least six feet wide.
What are they now?
They're right around six feet. Some are a little bigger than six feet. I think your inner walkway in the inner, it's like an octagon, are just at six feet. Some of the ones that come in from the streets are a little wider, so they will all be 72 inches.
Okay. And then there is one that is very close to that corner, Bedford and Cambridge, where that new signage is gonna be going in?
Yes.
So I know you're aware of that, but, so there's not gonna be any issue with encroaching on that, that space? I don't know what the measurements are exactly of that space.
They're not gonna move from where they are existing. If, if they're not quite six feet, they'll make them six feet throughout, but it's, they wouldn't be encroaching, like starting behind, going behind the sign or anything like that.
Okay.
I think the sign is staying in the current footprint, correct?
Yes.
The sign is there?
Well...
A little bigger?
A little bigger, yeah.
A little bigger?
Yeah.
Where that mulch pile is?
To where, okay.
About where it is.
The missing mulch pile. It's gone now. Yes. So I, I do also want to state that we have looked for funding through the state for this project as well. We applied for shared streets at the encouragement of Representative Gordon, and we were not successful. We've applied for an ADA grant in the past, not successful, and a park grant when we were looking, this is back probably in 2015, 14, 15, including as part of a park grant for Simons Park, and we were not successful. So we have tried other funding sources to get this work done.
Okay. And then my last question, obviously, this has to go to May Town Meeting, which I think is towards the end of May. What is your estimated timeline for, for starting this? This summer is very busy on that comment, so just...
Right. It's probably going to be a fall project. We've talked internally about between Celebrate Burlington, which is the first weekend in August, and Truck Day, which is the second weekend in September. We have to have all our ducks in a row and be out to bid, you know, if the money is, is approved at some point in June, you know, so we have the month of July to, you know, do contracts. And we'll have very specific dates in there, in our bidding pack as well.
Thank you. No other questions?
Mr. Chairman, may I just add to that, too, that we have again asked Rep. Gordon to try to put it in as an earmark again this year. We will not let our success rate deter us from continuing to try. But this is, we want to move the project forward. If we so happen to get an earmark for it, then that, the money would just come back. The money that we appropriated would just close back to free.
Nick?
Thank you. Joe and Sarah answered two of my questions, so I only have two questions for you. The first is about the octagon itself. Is it, this is like a two, a two double-edged question, I guess. Is it sinking, and are we gonna raise it? Like, I feel like in, in recent years, it seems to be sloping more than it used to. I saw, as you're grading, it's important for drainage, but I'm just curious, like, when we redo that, what's it gonna entail?
So all of the, I, I think what might be kind of going off kilter would be, maybe it's settling, the walkways themselves. I don't know what base they used under the asphalt. We have found some areas in town that were asphalt on top of dirt. So I'm not sure what is there. I'm gonna guess there was some kind of art pack under it, but what would be required of today would be different.
Okay. Awesome. And then my second question is, with all the work to the gazebo, how much of it do you think is coming down to make the repairs?
So all of the support posts and all of the railings would be coming down.
So just we're gonna take the roof clean off and just?
I think they're gonna work their way around it.
Okay.
In sections, yes. So nothing will have to be lifted off completely up, right? And I also forgot to mention, there will be steel plates on the, on each side of the supports, the four-by-six supports that go up to the, to hold the roof up. There'll be steel plates holding those in place. So they'll be bolted to the concrete, which is, the deck of the gazebo is concrete. It's a good eight to 12 inches of concrete, and that will, they'll be anchored into that.
Very good. Thank you, Brendan. Thank you, Chair.
Jimmy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, two of my questions are already answered, but a question on updating the PEA system. There was constant need for PEA system up there. Are we, are we looking at something in the future for that?
So when the electrical was redone, we had conduit put into the ground for the, for four-speaker locations around the common, strategically placed. We just ran out of money, and it is something that we'd like to, to bring back, to be able to. We just have to have the wires, speaker wire, put through the conduit. Probably have to blow out the conduit at, at this point. I'm sure mud, water has gotten in somehow through the ends and found its way in there. But I, I believe we have the ability to do that in-house.
Any ballpark number as far as the complete, money-wise to complete?
I don't, because the last time I had one, it was not, you know, it was probably five, six years ago, pre-COVID, so.
All right. I think we, I'd support that, because we desperately need some sort of modern PEA system up there.
Thank you, Jim. Most of my questions have been answered. My fellow board members just have a couple left. Brendan, I'm glad to see we're gonna not outfit this for access for the disabled, but prepare for it or kind of account for that. What, have we gotten any estimates on what that would cost to get that done in the future? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I, I have not, not sure an estimate now would be the same in a year or two. And, but it's something that I can do, obviously, before we get to full Ways and Means. They're, they're gonna wanna see that what the future holds, I'm sure, as well.
Okay. Yeah, another question. Do we call it a gazebo or a bandstand?
I've had it called both. I know it, I think it's, I changed maybe partially through this, and I realized that recently. It's a gazebo, but it was a bandstand.
I kinda like the octagon. Thank you, Mr. Priest.
So, yes, the, the structure on the common?
Exactly. I'm also in favor of this. I think it's a worthwhile project. We should maintain. It's a centerpiece in our town. Joe, you had a follow-up?
I did. I know I've said this before, but Brendan, I just want to congratulate you again on that award you got. You went down to, what town was it? I forget.
Norwood.
Norwood. Went down to Norwood, and Brendan got the award for probably the best Recreation Department in the state of Massachusetts. Am I correct?
Yes, so, yeah, it was...
Go ahead, toot your horn, brother.
It was the MRPA, Peter C. and Eric W. O'Brien Humanitarian Award, which is the highest honor that one can receive in Massachusetts Recreation and Parks. And Joe kind of stole my thunder. I think we're really lucky in Burlington to have such a great Parks and Rec Department. That's a credit to you and also your staff. I think we have an offering here for our residents that's second to none. And I'm already getting the shakes, trying to get ready for tomorrow night, to get ready for the summer program, and trying to get in there, because everyone, it's so popular. So thank you, Joe, for mentioning that. Congratulations, Brendan.
Thank you. Although my name is on that award, you know, I am the benefi, beneficiary of a phenomenal staff that work tirelessly every day to make sure that, you know, residents have phenomenal programs and safe, enjoyable facilities and parks to go to. So I, I'm the benefit of that. We have a, we have a great staff. And I'll put in a plug for summer registration tomorrow night. Check your household. Make sure your grades are correct, and ages and birth dates are correct for all your household members, and everyone's in there, because tomorrow night, it's like Armageddon.
May the odds forever be in your favor.
Yes, yes. Call the office during the day and make sure that, if you have any questions on your household, that they're cleaned up for registration tomorrow night.
Any other follow-up questions? Or with that, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the warrant article for town common walkways and bandstand, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstain? Chair is also aye, so that's 5-0-0.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brendan.
Thank you, Brendan.
Thank you, Brendan.
All right, moving right along. Item 76 is an approval required for application for a construction manager at risk for the Burlington High School.
Mr. Chairman, we have Terry Hartford from Doran Whittier, who is the OPM on the project for the high school. And also online is Rachel Rincon. We'll unmute to see if she's...
Yes. Oh, so she unmuted. She was texting me. I don't know if she can hear, or, be that as it may. Thank you very much for, for having me. I've submitted, my name's Terry Hartford. I work at Doran Whittier. I recognize some of you from numerous public meetings that we've had. I'm sure you're very familiar with the high school building project. We are in the throes of completing what is called the Preferred Schematic Report, where the committee is ultimately going to narrow a selection to a preferred option. And some of the options that we've been looking at include basically building a new building adjacent to the existing building. And you can imagine, when you have that type of close proximity to an existing occupied space, it presents certain challenges. And there are a couple different construction delivery methods that the town and, and all municipalities look at. At Fox Hill, you have a design bid build construction delivery method. Here at the high school, because of, I think, a number of the challenges that we see coming, we would prefer and have advised the building committee to go with CM at Risk, which is a construction manager at risk. By doing that, the construction manager comes on a little bit earlier, and they, they provide a couple of really critical items that we're gonna need here, which was one, they'll look at constructability, they'll look at phasing, which is, you can imagine, if we are doing an addition renovation on the existing building, it's going to be challenging. And the construction managers out there are very familiar with those types of things. They work with the design team, the OPM, the owner. And then critically, they also come up with an independent third-party estimate based on the schematic design, which I think is going to be absolutely critical in this community, to have, one, not just the estimate from the designer's consultant, but also to have one from the construction manager. You sit down together at the end of schematic design and run through a reconciliation so that you agree a budget figure, which I know you all know that it's, it is a large number. And I, I believe that providing as much information around that is going to be critical to ultimately gain the support of the town and, and put it to a vote. So what I included with you was my cover letter. There is an application to the OIG. Now, I wanted to make clear that this is kind of a formality, you know, step in the process. We are not obligated to go CM at Risk, but in order for me to run a procurement process where we, you know, pre-qualify folks, we take proposals, we'll narrow those down and, and ultimately select one, without the OIG approving our ability to enter into a CM at Risk contract, I can't conclude that process. So effectively, those two efforts are gonna run concurrently. We're gonna try and, if we get approval to, to, for you to submit the, the application, we'll meet with the building committee. We have another meeting on Thursday night. We've already appointed a subcommittee of, of individuals that will evaluate and sort of manage that process along with the design team. And, you know, our hope is that sometime over this summer, that we can bring a CM onboard. So that's what I included. I also then included, if you didn't have information on, on the high school project, you now do, but there are slides in here that go through some of the benefits and describe the differences between design bid build and CM at Risk. And then lastly, I think we included the minutes from that meeting that shows that the, the building committee is in unanimous approval to, to go down that path. So with that, I'll pause and happily take any questions.
Do you have any questions from the board on this? Mr. Priest?
Thank you. Mr. Hartford, thanks for being here tonight. The funding for this construction manager comes from where?
So right now, we do not have any funds allocated specifically to a construction manager. So typically, what will happen as part of the procurement process, we will either identify funds for pre-construction services, but these guys are in a competitive environment. So my expectation, actually, is that firms are going to bid it on the basis of, yes, we will do a defined amount of pre-construction services to support the schematic design and the pricing estimate. And if the project receives approval, a contingent payment will be made. But if we do not get approval, there will be no payment. So that's one method. Another one is, you know, as part of our budget with the school building committee, you know, we have allocated $1.5 million. 1.4 of that is earmarked for various consultants, including Doran Whittier. But the town still has $100,000 at its own discretion to use for pre-construction services. So my expectation is that between a combination of those things, we're gonna be able to get somebody under contract at a price that is acceptable, I believe, to the building committee and to the project as a whole.
I'm sorry, if I, if I heard you correctly, you were saying that if the project does not go through, they don't get paid?
Correct.
They're doing the work pro bono?
Effectively. So it's called pre-construction services, and, and I'm sure there's gonna be gentlemen and ladies watching this that are at these firms. Oftentimes, it's called FreeCon. They want this work. This is a $350 million job. And so, and there are only certain types of firms that can do this. And they're the big ones that, that, you know, I don't need to mention, but if I did, you'd know their names. They're gonna be hungry for this work. It's, it's a big job. It's, it's in the Boston area. This is, this is something that, you know, if you come to some of our meetings, you'll see representatives of some of the larger construction firms.
And if it weren't pro bono, what would it cost on average?
So what I'll tell you is, is so the, the next town over, I believe in, in Lexington, that number that was negotiated, I believe was 150... that number that was negotiated, I believe was $150,000. I've seen others that range. I'm doing one in another town a little bit further down, 495, pre-construction was in the $100,000 range. My guess is that it's between 75 and 125 if we have to go with a number.
Okay. All right.
But my, and, and my expectation is to make the recommendation to the building committee is to use funds that have already been earmarked and approved as part of the budget that we already have. So, I don't intend to come back to the select board or ways and means for funds for pre-construction.
Right. Okay. John, is it possible to make a vote contingent on that? That they use funds either that are already allocated or secure the pro bono work? Is that, like, is that within our jurisdiction at this particular juncture?
So, the, the application is very prescriptive of what the vote is to be, and it's basically to authorize the building committee to explore CM at Risk as an option. So, I would think not.
Not, right. Okay. Okay.
I mean, that doesn't mean you can't express your feelings to the building committee to say...
Sure.
We would rather it be free con versus, or at least fit within the...
Mm-hmm.
The, if it doesn't fit, have to come back for funding anyway, so that would...
Right.
Sure. Okay. Look, I'll, I'll say it now, you know, I have concern, I had concerns about this. I think that it seems warranted, given where they are, but the fact that they don't have an option selected yet and that the, the minutes seem to express a lot of varied concerns around the different pieces of the project, from parking to the wetlands. I mean, like, I was reading through this weekend. Everyone seemed to have something that they were concerned about. And knowing that this is, this is going to be on the ballot for a debt exclusion, that I want to make sure that we, we aren't running headfirst into spending more money than need be should the town go, yeah, no, we're not doing this, which is still a possibility. So, knowing that it can be pro bono, knowing that there's funding available, I'll support this this evening, but I am a little concerned with the project, given how many concerns are being raised at this particular juncture. So, that's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Sarah?
I have some questions, yes.
Okay.
Thank you for waiting and coming tonight and for providing this information to us. I did have a few questions. You know, this language is not super familiar to me, design bid builds, all this stuff. So, can you explain in like really simple terms the difference between design bid build and the health construction manager at risk?
So, if you can turn to hopefully materials that I've provided, and it's actually page 38, you'll see an overview of construction delivery methods. This is in the presentation that was given to the school building committee. Do you have that?
Yep.
You do. So, design bid build, you know, it's, it's price-based, closed book accounting, fixed price, so that anytime there's a change, it's an immediate change order, right? So, it's, it's, it's the type of arrangement where if I had a piece of land that was separate and I had, it was new construction and I just was hiring a contractor to go build that and we knew exactly what it was, I would recommend design bid build. I mean, that's the world I grew up in. I used to develop power plants. They know what they're doing. It's in a separate land. But when you encounter something like what I expect us to probably end up with over at the high school, CM at Risk, you, you, you work together with the design team, with the contractor, and it's all open book and you look at the scope of work and, and then ultimately you agree that scope of work. And the contractor buys that out in something called a guaranteed maximum price, right? And the, the real benefit there is that it is open book and that we are all looking at, at what those pieces are as opposed to just telling me what the pair of shoes costs. I want to know how the pair of shoes, all the pieces. And so, the other really big thing is, is this, the assistance in pre-construction on phasing and, and coming up with this independent constructability estimate is a real benefit to a project like this. And typically, or more often than not, when you are doing some sort of addition or renovation or working in an occupied space, the CM at Risk method is, has proven to be the better option from certain of the school building committee, school building, construction industry.
Okay. That helps sort of frame the answer to my question, sort of leading into this, which is Burlington has a history of using both these options. Memorial and Fox Hill are designed bid build because, like you explained, they're on the property but separate, completely separate and sort of more straightforward. Marsha Simons was sort of a more complicated ad reno, which is why we want the CM at Risk. And I could see that this is going to be a very complicated project, so I understand the reasoning with that respect. My other question is regarding the subcommittee.
Yes.
Are they charged with actually hiring?
No. What, so, part of the procurement process, and it's prescribed, right, is that we have a subcommittee and they will assist my team with, one, we'll put out qualifications, an SOQ, Statement of Qualifications. Firms will bid that. We then will evaluate their qualifications and if they meet our qualifications, then they will be invited to submit an RFP, a Request for Proposal. The subcommittee effectively evaluates the, the calls and then the ultimate proposals based on, you know, we'll have scoring sheets like you would have with any procurement of, of services. They then will vote because it's, it's basically scored. And they then make a recommendation to the school building committee to say, this is who we'd like to go. The school building committee will vote on that. And then ultimately, I believe it's the town, which is why we've had to have counsel sign off on this, will, will enter into that contract. But that contract, I believe it, it would be done through the business manager, just like the, the one the school has with the design team and with the OPM.
Okay.
That would be my expectation.
And so, for that subcommittee, that's really their own, their only charge is in the procurement process, looking at the RF...
So, it is, it is a specific committee design for this particular effort. So, we have a, a number of different working groups and committees, but this one is specifically for that.
Okay. And then my other question was about something that you mentioned tonight. In the whole process, I believe this construction manager you said would sort of independently come to their own numbers in the schematic design. Is that accurate?
Yeah. So, what they do is, there's a whole bunch of different trades in any building, you know, so electric, plumbing, fire protection. There's, there's about 45 trades in total. Some of them are filed sub bids, some are like, I don't want to get totally in the weeds on construction. But they effectively take the schematic design and they go out to various subcontractors to put together a price estimate based on the schematic design. And, and at the same time, the designer brings that. So, there's a couple of different estimating firms. There's two really that are used throughout the Commonwealth on school building projects. And so, those guys also then provide their own independent estimate. So, you now have two estimates, one from a builder, one from an estimator, and you come together and you do what is called a reconciliation. So, if there's any real variances, we have to find out why. And then the parties figure out that difference and agree a number for every specific trade. And so, that, that number then gets built up. And so, if you look on, I'll do the BHS Building Project website, we have a section on project finances. I would encourage people, there's a, there's one called the Preferred Schematic Report. And in that estimate, it's a 95-page estimate where you'll see each option that has about 15 to 18 pages of how the estimate gets built up from a construction perspective. And so, we will do that again. This time, it will be accompanied with a builder.
I've had a lot of questions on the numbers that are out there for the community throughout this project, so I, I, I've already said it, but I would appreciate the, the committee really taking a, a really hard look at the, now that we're down to two options. Some of the numbers just seemed off and it...
Right.
Off.
Right.
And I know that I don't have anything nefarious behind...
Yeah, no, no, and I appreciate that and, and know that we've done a fair bit of work. We're going to be presenting again on Thursday night to sort of help explain how the options went from PDP to PSR. I've met with a large number of the SBC members. I also met with Doug Davidson and John Eiler last week to go through that, those numbers with them and, and address their concerns. And so, I would ask that you afford me the opportunity to address that because there, it, what it is, is it all comes down to square footage. And I think when we had the community meeting, I'll be the first one to admit, there was, there was something that didn't look right and I need to explain that. And so, that obviously isn't the purpose of, of tonight's hearing, but trust me, it will be front and center on Thursday night. And hopefully, that can help answer some, some questions and some concerns that people very legitimately had.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Yep.
What is the timeline on when we clear this position?
So, it, it's probably anywhere from a 10 to 14-week timeframe from start to finish, from the time that you issue, you know, you've got to advertise in the public register, you got to take in qualifications, you've got to then approve folks, you then have to ask them for proposals. It'll take three or four weeks to do that. That comes in, you've got to evaluate those. So, my guess is the timeframe that we have has it winding up in, in late June, early July. So, and that's on the basis that we get started pretty much right away.
Okay. And there will be a final design chosen at that point, I assume?
The expectation that we've put in, you know, this is up to the building committee, but they are meant to narrow an option as soon as possibly Thursday. So, that then would go into schematic design.
Okay.
But that, that, and so that decision is entirely not mine.
Right. Understood. Yep. Understood. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Nizio.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add something at the, at the highest level, because we all talked about it and I talked to Terry about it before, but, and he mentioned this, that by approving this tonight in no way means that the, the $350 million project is moving forward. It's just giving that committee and the OPM and the designer that tool to have a CM onboard. It's industry standard for a project this size to, to go CM and to also, the earlier the better. You get them on before SD, you're going to be more successful in the project. It's just the builders getting the set of eyes on the plans as they evolve, as they develop. So, again, by saying yes to this and, and they have no other option but to do it within their budget or come back and ask for, for more money, and it doesn't mean that the project is moving forward or even a specific, a specific design is picked. This is just truly to give them the, the tool to have this option available to them should the committee decide it's the best.
Thank you, Mr. Nizio. Terry, thank you for coming out tonight. While you're here, I have a million questions for you, but the questions pertinent to what we're discussing tonight have been answered and I think I should, in the interest of fairness, stay on topic. And I heard you say, let me have the chance on Thursday to speak, so I will refrain and just wait for Thursday's meeting. Hopefully, those questions will be answered. This is not the place and time, even though I have a million questions for you. So, anyway, so that being said, thank you for coming. Thank you for the reference on the high school. We appreciate it.
We have to vote to approve, right?
I will take a motion at this point.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the application for construction manager at risk for the Burlington High School.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Chair is also aye, so that's 5-0-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Appreciate it. And I appreciate you sort of avoiding all those other questions because...
We have to stick to what we're, we're here for.
Thursday.
I will, I'll be watching Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is number 77. It's our Class II license conundrum. I'm going to take a hack at trying to explain what's going on here. So, recently, the town was informed, I know this has been kind of a weird situation for the town, is that recently we've gotten, we received a lot of, all of a sudden, suddenly we've received a whole bunch of Class II license applications and other than Burlington being a lucky hotbed for car sales, we kind of were wondering why. And I think this item tonight kind of answers some of our questions. I think that maybe there was a potential loophole here at 1500, the district. And we were informed as a town that the Class II license holders at 1500 District Avenue are not selling cars at the location, which we knew. And in a letter, we sent this out to eight different Class II license holders we have saying, under MGL, Chapter 40, Section 59, to provide a license to applicant must be the proper person. Number two, the business is or will be their principal business. Number three, that the place of business is suitable for the purpose. Number four, they must have a repair facility either on-site or have access to repairs of facility. And furthermore, the license is only issued to an applicant with reference to the particular premises. And it is our belief that these eight businesses do not meet this clarification. And also, we were informed by our, our building inspector that, that it's a violation of our zoning bylaws to have these there. So, we have, we sent this letter out to eight different Class II license holders and we asked them to come tonight and kind of state their case and have a discussion on what's going on. And I think that's what this motion, this item is about. Mr. Nizio, did I get that right?
I nailed it. So, this is the opportunity, as you said, for the board to understand from each of the license holders what they're doing at that location, to understand the actual business, how it's being transacted. The board will then be able to take that information and in consultation with legal counsel and zoning enforcement, be able to make a decision on whether the licenses are valid or for any reason if they should be revoked. So, that's not something that will happen tonight, but tonight is the opportunity for the license holder to be able to answer the board's questions or more specifically, talk about, do they actually work out of that building? What do they actually do at that building? Is it, is business transacted at that building? And then, as I said, take that into consideration, consult with legal counsel and code enforcement and be able to decide.
Okay. And before we get to the eight business owners, I see Mark is here. Mark, is there anything you want to add before we get started to kind of, to the discussion? Or did, did I pretty much hit that part right? Because I want to, while you're here, I want to make sure and...
Mark Dupell, building inspector? No, John has it.
Got it. We got it right. Okay. Perfect. All right. So, with that said, we will now speak to our businesses. And are you here tonight for the, for this issue?
I'm Andrea Parisen.
All right. You're in person. You're here, so I'm going to take you first. Come on up. If you would, sign the sheet and introduce yourself and thank you for coming in person, the only one. So...
Thank you.
Because of that, we're going to take you and listen to you first. I'm sorry. What was your name again?
Andrea Parisen.
JMP.
JMP.
JMP Auto Sales is your business?
Yes.
So, like I said, thank you for coming in person, Mr. Parisen. And I see you're the owner of JMP Auto Sales?
Yes.
And you did receive our letter?
Yes.
And I will now give you some time to kind of explain if there are any extenuating circumstances or what, what's going on to make sure your business still qualify for the Class II license.
Yes. Oh, thank you for having me.
No problem. Thank you.
It was just after the pandemic and I was doing the used car dealer business, but I was under a partner, under his business. That, that, that was not my own business. But after the pandemic, most likely, the auction transaction was online. So, we go to auction, you don't present yourself and you go online, you sign, it's on the website, and then you buy cars. And then they give you the way, you cannot move the car from that auction and then you will sell the car. At that time... At that time, I wanted to have my own business, and I did some research, and I found out this town may give me the possibility, I may have an office, and then they can provide me with the license. And at that time, I applied for the license. It was to do business online from auctions to auctions, just after the pandemic. Sometimes you can take the car from one auctions and then to other auctions. And then if you do so, you can use the carry, the carry on. The car carry, they take like nine cars at the same time. That means you can move your car from auctions to auctions. You can buy online, and then you sell your car through auctions. But to do so, you need a license. And then, like, they give me that possibility, I apply for it, and I got it. And I did business from auction to auction, not at that location. I used the location, the 1500 District Ave for office only. But it was clearly said in the application, no cars onsite. And then, that's how I did business. I received my mails from the location, and then sometimes I come to the office to do some work. You need sometime to do some research, go through the auctions website, and then do some research, get some notes for the cars that you're going to buy. And some auctions, they give you possibility, you can check the car, you can go to the auction, you check it. As it was one requirement, you must have a physical address to obtain the license, and then I have 1500 District Ave. I remember when I was at the board, they asked me the question, so why would you pay a rent instead of staying home? And then my answer was, I got some kids. Sometime if you are home, you're working home, you may have sister, and then if you get an office, so it's better for you. You take your time and you can be concentrated, and then you do your work. That's how I use my license to do business. But by doing so, I may have some friends, some family, they may need a car. Sometime they contact me, I can go to the auction, buy the car for them, and then I provide the paper to register the car. Once they register the car, and then I can go with the person with the plate, the car registered, and then they can take the car off from the auction. But it comes not very often. But my main business was to do car business from auctions to auctions, not at that location. That's why I didn't, I was not worried about the zoning, because I didn't use the property for parking car or for selling car. It was just for office. That was the business I was doing. And then I got the license, I believe, since April 2022.
Do you have a physical office at 1500?
Yes.
You do. And do you have access to a repair facility?
No, we don't repair, because we sell from auction to auction. You don't need to repair the car when you buy the car from the auction to auction.
So I guess I'll open it up to questions from the board for Mr. Parisen, if anyone has any.
I'll throw up.
Okay, Jimmy?
One of the criteria, 1, 2, 3, 4 is met under 140, 59. I think the main issue here, and I'm glad we have Mr. Dupell, is we can't allow these businesses by zoning laws. So even if the applicant's able to satisfy 1 through 4, our bylaws, I mean, I've approved them in the past, I've approved all, probably all these, but I did not know at that time, I don't think any of us knew that they're not allowed by our bylaws in that area. So I don't know, you want to say, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah. And that's what, that's what got us to this point. And what we're trying to do is get the best understanding we can of how each of the business actually operates. I think we got a great description here of exactly what they're doing and what's happening onsite, and then we will take that with legal counsel to make a determination of whether that it does count as car sales per se, and if it does, you're correct in that we don't allow car sales at that property. But I think there's, it's more complex than that, so that's, that's why we're here. But as you read the memo, you would think they're selling cars and you can't do it at that property, so it's a no brainer. But I think there's more to it, and we just need, we just want to make sure we have enough information about exactly how each business is doing business in order for our legal counsel to give us the best advice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, that's down the road, but your four requirements are, and the fourth one, must have a repair facility onsite or have access to repair facility. You said you don't have that, you don't...
Yes, because I didn't sell the car at that building.
Okay, I'm aware that is a requirement, though. It says it's, there's four requirements. The proper person, as the chairman said, the business is or will be their principal business. Three, the place of business is suitable for the purpose, and four, must have a repair facility onsite or have access to a repair facility. I'll stop there, because I know Mr. Mar...
Can I just interrupt?
Absolutely, go ahead.
So I want to ask you, so do you have access, you have access to a repair shop? If you need to go to one, do you have someone that you can use all the time?
Like I use my personal car. I can go to a shop when I, when I need to, but the business I'm conducting doesn't require that, doesn't require that. Because like I said, it's between auctions to auctions, and you sell the car at the auction as is.
You see exactly what I'm saying. Very closely. Do you have the ability to take one of those cars to a repair shop that you use?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Nope, that's it.
Sarah, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Nick?
I think so, so I'm going to give a crack at it.
Sure.
Thanks, Chairman. Thank you for being here in person.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Can you, and I apologize, because you did a little bit, but can you help us understand an auction to auction sale? I'm getting a little, like, and this is just my lack of knowledge, right? So there's an auction, it's selling a car. So you come in, you buy that car, and then you sell it to another auction.
Yeah, you can sell it at the same auction, and you can sell it at another auction.
Bananas.
Yeah, let me take an example. If I go to Menheim, Menheim, New England, in Tottenham, and then, that's an auction. I go and then I see some cars, and then I buy them. To be able to be at the auction, you must be a dealer, so you must have a license to allow you to get in. And then once you buy the car, you are a buyer from the auction. You have the same right to sell the same car at the same auction. Let's say you buy this car, it costs, it costs you like $3,000. So you're looking for to sell that car for $3,300 in order to make 300 profit.
Right.
That's how I live. So at the same auction, I can sell the same car, not the same auction day, but another day. For Menheim, New England, it's on Tuesday. So I can go to Menheim, I buy a car on Tuesday, and then I sell it next Tuesday. So in Billica, there's an auction on Wednesday, I can go to Billica Auction, and then I buy a car and I sell it the next Wednesday. Or I can buy the car, and then I transport from one auction to another auction, I sell it to another auction. Most likely, you look, you look for auctions that are cheaper. Let's say Menheim, New England, south, they are cheaper.
Yeah.
In Tottenham. So most likely, I buy cars there, and then I sell them to Flemington. I decide in Flemington, there's more money. You may buy a car for $2,000, and then you sell it for 26.
Right.
So you make 600 profit. That's how I leave.
Right, okay. That helps shed a little bit of light. I could ask a jillion more questions, I won't. So it seems like we have some outstanding pieces of information, maybe clarity around whether or not this constitutes a violation of the bylaws, right? And we need to clarify from each of the license holders whether or not they have repair services available, which if they're going from auction to auction, sounds like they may not. But to clarify, John, with you, this is not approving or anything tonight, this is just for discussion to go back to legal with?
Correct.
Okay, just want to clarify that. Okay. I think that's all of my questions for right now.
So tonight, we're just gathering information from each of the license holders, and we're going to put that all together and see if, number one, they qualify under MGL for the Class II, and number two, that there's no zoning bylaw violation with this.
Correct.
Okay.
So I think that was a good set of questions for each of them to be prepared to answer. What, you know, what exactly goes on at 1500 District? And are there actually transactions that happen at 1500 District? Is there access to repair if needed, or if not? The explanation of why not? And then we could take all of that to legal counsel and get their opinion of, yes, you're selling cars, you do qualify for the license, but we don't, we don't allow the license at that address or something else.
Sure, you had a follow up?
I did. Just trying to see how many other ones are online, but anyway. So you kind of contradicted yourself a little bit a couple minutes ago. You said you only went to the office every now and then, very rare you said you went to the office. So how often do you actually go to the office?
Most likely three, three times a week.
Three times a week?
Yeah.
Okay. And you, you don't have set hours, you just go whenever you're, whenever you want to get away?
When I apply for the application, I put an hour, but I whispered it correctly.
Okay, all right. Okay, it just needs to know how many, how much will we actually use at the office for? Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, well, thank you for coming in. And if anyone have any other questions for Mr. Parisen?
I just want to say thank you for educating us, because clearly we don't...
Yeah, thank you very much.
...this business model, so I appreciate you taking...
Thank you, I've been doing that for years.
And thank you for actually showing up and coming in, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, we'll be back in touch. All right, so yeah, and we're going to start with everyone online, and I guess, easiest ways, I'm just going to ask each one when they start if they have a physical office and if they have a repair, access to repair facility, because that's something we have to ask of all of them, and then they can kind of state their case.
Are you going to go down the list?
Yeah, you need to tell me who you want unmuted.
Okay.
How, you tell me what you want, but they can unmute themselves.
Okay, right. All right.
So if you go down the list?
We want to start with the, yeah, just, we want to start with RAJ and see if Roberto C is here?
Okay. He was just sent a request to unmute.
So RAJ Auto Sales, if you could unmute yourself, you are, you are up. Roberto, Roberto? Okay, thank you very much for joining us this evening, and again...
He must be on twice or something.
Are you logged in on two different computers?
We'll be able to see which one is coming up on with...
What was that, I'm sorry?
Should be good, yeah.
Okay, so we're going to give you a chance to kind of explain your business, and, but first, I'm going to go with each of you, asking, do you have a physical office at 1500 District Avenue? And do you have an access to a repair facility that you can use for your business?
Well, that's it on everyone. I have address for the, I use the address for the business for used car, for sale, auction to auction, but I have the garage for affiliate for someone sometime, have car sometime, not all the time, to fix it. So I buy car sometime, 10, 20 cars, but I transfer to Carita, or Menheim, Adisa Auction, and auction to auction. So yeah, I keep my delay about for that. Delay license.
Okay, so just to clarify, you have a physical office at 1500 District Avenue in Burlington? You have an office, you're renting an office there?
Yes.
Yes. And you said you had access to a garage if need be?
But not to know for the fixed car. Sometime when I buy the car, any problem, I bring it to the garage for fix and bring it, bring it to auction again.
Okay, so you said, okay. I'll turn to my fellow board members now, if they have any questions for RAJ Auto Sales.
I think that's a good line of questions. If you ask them those questions, then...
We can, yeah, at least start them off, and if anyone has any particular questions on anything he said, or in general, they want to add.
Only, only because I asked Andre when he was here, if I could ask, how often are you in office?
Maybe want to just repeat it. Did you hear the question, Roberto?
Yes, I'm here, can you repeat that again?
Yes, I was asking, how often in a week are you in the office?
Oh, sometime I go a week, I was going in. Two, or sometime four, depend the paper I have to fill out there. Depending on how much the paper, depending on how much the car, I will go there.
Okay, so just to clarify, you said some, two days, but sometimes more?
Yes, sometime, depending the paper I want, I want to fill out about, depending on how much the car I have.
Okay, thank you.
So just to clarify, two days a week, you go into 1500 District Avenue in Burlington to your office, did you conduct this business?
Not, not exactly two days, depending the...
Depending on the week, on, yeah, sometimes could be more, could be less, depending on the, your work. But it is, you do go into an office?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for RAJ?
No, my question was just to ask right next.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. We'll be back to you with our findings.
All right, thank you too.
Thank you. So now we're going to move on to NDG Motor Cars.
He, he's the one that submitted the letter.
Okay.
Unable to come.
Nick was unable to come, we all got a copy of his letter?
Correct.
Nick, thank you for sending that in, we'll use that as our, yeah.
Can I just comment on that?
You may.
On the letter he submitted, he did address the question of the repair shop. I don't see that he directly addressed the question that we, the first question that we've been asking, you know, does he have an established office, how often, how often does he go in? So that might be worth a follow up.
Okay.
We're happy to follow up with him tomorrow.
Awesome, thanks, Lynn. So next, we're going to go on to Bell Black Motor Group, Theory, pet it?
I just sent him. On twice, you can see him on twice.
So if you could just log out to one of the, yeah, I see Peter Theory and there, if you could just log out of one of them, so we don't have that feedback, that would really help us. Let us know when you're done with that. Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Oh, that's good, okay. So with, like everyone else, I'm going to start with our first two questions, and then I'll give you an opportunity to kind of explain your Class II license usage to the board. First question is, do you have a physical office at 1500 District Avenue in Burlington that you physically go to and work, and how often do you go to that office?
I don't go there at that point, because, you know, I've got the, and I don't... I don't go there at that point, because you know, I got another, and I also, I got another one, I got the Alex and Walton.
Okay, so you do not have a physical office there, you work in Waltham?
No, I got three operations.
I'm sorry?
I got two offices, and one in Boston, one in Walton, and also I got the one in Burlington.
So you have two places you work?
Three.
Three? One is Waltham, where are the other two?
One is Dorchester. If you Google right now, you will see Bell Black Services LLC, it's in 650 Washington Street, Dorchester. Why I choose to get that office there? When I went to the meeting, I explained that specifically, it's a, like, good area. And sometime I client crazy at my office, if I have too many paper work to do, I can just pass by there. Feel free to work alone. But for the cars, I've been doing mechanic for more than 25 years. I use for my department to body, and I also got like three other galleries. I help them out if they need. If I need to fix the car, I can go there, but I don't buy car to fix.
Okay, so you do not have an office at 1500 District Avenue?
Yes, I do, I want to.
I'm sorry?
I have one.
And do you go in, ever go in there at all to work?
I don't have to go there, because you know, I got my other office in 650 Washington Street. But if I need to be in peace, I just pass by there, allow some paperwork, if I.
So do you have physical space there, you're renting, that sits empty at 1500 District Avenue?
It's mostly empty only if I have a meeting with the customer, I don't want any of my other, a customer or company calling me. I just go there, meeting the person, fill out paper, and talk about what I have to do.
Do you have access to a repair facility that you can use?
I do, because I've been doing mechanic for more than 25 years. I worked for five years for my department to body, they still working for me too, for all of my needs. I can prove that to.
Okay, we're having a little bit of troll understanding you, and if we have questions, I guess we can follow up with written answers, which may be easier.
Yes, I do have access, because I do mechanic for my department to body. When they need me.
Oh, okay. Oh, you, he is in the chat, okay.
He is in the chat, telling you he does paperwork there.
Okay, 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 great. Alright. Do we have any other questions for Bell Black? Sir, is there anything else you want to add, I guess, about your business and Class II license?
Yep. The only thing, like, to add, yeah, because when I start open, like, that open opportunity to get a dealership, I was planning to get a place, like, because I'm always into the business. I'm trying to speak, my business is different area, like, and Western Stand, and also I already started one in Jersey. I'm trying to create a job, create like opportunity for my other people can work with me. For now, I don't have a guy there yet, but I'm looking for a space there. That's why I start by getting the dealer, and then I'll try to do more.
Okay, well, thank you very much for joining us tonight, and we will be back in touch. And if you have any other questions, we can just reach out via email.
Thank you so much, have a good evening.
Alright, thank you, have a good evening. Now we're going to move on to Yavu Motors, Altis Judy. Altis, are you with us tonight, online?
Good afternoon.
Okay, there we go, Yavu, alright, alright. Thank you for joining us this evening. I'm going to start with the first two questions that I've asked everybody, and then I'll, I'll open the floor to you. Do you have a physical office at 1500 District Avenue in Burlington? That you go to and work at, and how often?
Hello, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon, good evening.
Yeah, also sorry, yeah, good.
It's okay.
Yeah, my name is Altis Judy from Zaro Models LLC. Yes, I have an office in 115 Burlington. Yes, I'm, I use, I use this office, it's only to receive my mail. But I'm not using this office to sell cars, to repair cars, anything like that. Because I was looking for an office. Because before, I've like four years selling cars. I was on the, you know, the partner, business and access, dealer access. So I'm buying, I see, I saw, I have to have my, my own business. So I, I said, I have to, the law of Massachusetts required to have a licensed business, a licensed dealer. We have to have an office, something like that. So in the area where I'm living, I did not find an office. So when I'm looking for an office online, I found this office. They, they explained to me, I talked to them, they told me, I can, I can use this office for, to pack cars, to repair cars, to sell cars. So, but I can use the office to, to my, my, my papers and everything. So I, 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 I have the, I have the address, this address.
Okay, so you don't have a physical office there, you just use it for mailing?
Sorry?
You don't have a physical office at 1500 District, you just use it as a mailing address?
Yeah, yeah, I have a physical address, yeah, yeah, it's a physical address.
Okay. And?
Yes.
Do you have access to a repair facility?
No, no, I can't, I can't repair a car here in this, in this area.
Okay, do we have any questions from the board for Yavu Motors?
Yes, sir.
Nope, I think, I think you're all set, we got everything, all the information we needed, and we will be back in touch. I appreciate you coming and joining us tonight.
Alright.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you so much.
We're going to move on now to Best Friend Auto Sales, Marvin's. Are you with us? Oh, I see Best Friend Auto, if you could unmute yourself.
Yes, hello.
Hey Marvin's, thank you for joining us tonight.
Yes, my name is Marvin Kazel. I come from Best Friend Auto Sales. Yes.
Okay, so I want to, I want to start with just, as, just with like everyone else, in fair, so it's fair. Two questions for you, number one, do you have a physical office at 1500 District Avenue in Burlington? That you go to and work at, and how often?
Yes, I come to the office like three or four, four days a week. For, for paper work only, but I need a parking car there.
And you come and work there for three, three or four days a week?
Three or four days, yeah, it depends how many car I got, by the way.
Depending on how many cars you're working on?
Yeah.
And do you have access to a repair facility for your business?
Oh yes, I got, I got a garage where I bring car to fix and rupture, and I bring it back to the auction.
Okay, thank you for answering our questions, I'll now open it to the board to see if anybody has any specific questions. Good, is there anything else, Marvin, that you want to add about your business that you want to share with the board? Okay. Marvin, if you could just unmute? I didn't give him a chance to talk, if you wanted. Marvin, I guess he's gone, alright. I guess you're good, and we'll be back in touch with you, with our findings. Thank you for joining us. Now we're going to move on to Inversion Lexus Auto Sales, Jean Remy Lexus. Are you with us, and if you could unmute yourself? Mr. Lexus?
Hello?
Hello, are you with Inversion Lexus Auto Sales?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for joining us this evening, I'm going to start tonight with the same two questions I've asked everybody else. Number one, do you have a physical office at 1500 District Avenue in Burlington that you go to and work at? And how often, if so?
I do have, but I don't go that often. I go only if I need to.
Okay, so you do have a physical office that you can go to and work if you need to?
Yes.
And do you have a, any access to a repair facility?
Yes, I do.
Is there anything else you want to share with the board about your business and the Class II license and the business you're operating?
No, just like doing business, but planning to get like more opportunity there.
Okay. Is there any questions from the board for Inversion Lexus Auto Sales?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir, for joining us, we have everything we need, if not, we'll reach back out, and we will be back to you with our findings.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Frank Auto Sales, Mr. Frankie Porport. Mr. Porport, are you with us this evening, if you could unmute?
Yes, good afternoon, everyone.
Good, good evening, and I'm going to start you also, in fairness, just to be fair, same two questions we've asked the last seven, last six people. Do you have a physical office at 1500 District Avenue in Burlington that you can go to and work at? And if so, how often do you go?
Can you repeat for me again?
I'm asking, do you have a physical office at 1500 District Avenue in Burlington? That you can go to and work at, and if so, how often do you use it?
Yes.
So you have a physical office, how often do you go? How many times do you use it?
Um, three, three times a week.
About three times a week you're in there? And do you have a, any access to a repair facility you can use for your business?
Can you repeat?
I said, do you have an, you have access to a repair facility that you can use for your business?
No.
You do not? Is there anything else you want to share with the board regarding your business and your Class II license? That may be applicable in this hearing?
Repeat for me again, please.
I said, do you have anything else you want to share with the board or add to tonight's meeting? That may help us determine what's going to happen?
No.
Okay, that said, any other questions from the board for Frank Auto Sales? Seeing none, we will be back to you, if you have any questions, we'll reach out either way. And we will be back to you with our decision, and I want to thank you for joining us this evening.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Alright, that was fun. That is finished. Item 78 on our agenda is citizens' time. Is there anyone here, either on the room or online, that'd like to speak for citizens' time? I'm seeing nobody in the room, anybody online? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 79, which is approval for the May 25 Town Meeting Warrant Index. Mr. Denizio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, in your packet, there was a copy of the index of articles for May Town Meeting. The board needs to just take a vote to officially put those warrant articles in front of Town Meeting for this next May.
Any other question, any questions or comments on the board regarding the index? Nah, seeing none, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion to approve the index. On warrant articles.
Second.
It is made in second to approve the motion of index of articles for May Town Meeting. Every, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstain? Chair votes aye, that's 5-0-0, that's approved. Item 80, we're going to move on to some department budget reviews.
Can I ask a question about the?
You may.
I see there's another warrant articles agenda item later on. Is that why we talk about which ones we're going to take a position on?
Uh, that will be, we'll actually take, we're going to hear from the departments that are here on their warrant articles, since they're already here.
Okay.
Uh, so we voted one of the warrant articles, 4-19, when Brendan was presenting. This is actually just voting on the index, and that, item 81, is something you're going to see for the next three meetings. And that'll be to hear and take a position on warrant articles.
Okay.
I think at our strategic planning, we'll hear from the board about any that they don't normally take a position on. Would they, who would they like, when would they like to hear on those, have someone come and present them?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, so do you want to take them in order as they're listed?
Yes, please.
Andy, okay. So we're going to start with Fire first, Andy, you're up.
Before Chief Connerdy gets going, in your packet was a summary sheet. And a copy of the budget for each of the departments you'll see tonight. We're going to have Chief Connerdy do his budget, and then after we get through the other ones, we'll have them do their warrant articles when we get to that item. But you'll see in both the Fire and Police, that very minimal increases based, Chief Connerdy can speak specifically to them. But both of, the reason we were able to make guidelines this year was to irregularly low budget requests from both Police and Fire. So I think, Andy, if you want to kind of give an overview?
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, everyone. As John said, the budget is fairly flat, 0.24% increase. As opposed to last year, it went up 2.92%. We were asked to hold off on, well, we were asked to, to keep it low, because they didn't know how negotiations were going to be, be going. And salaries are 91% of our budget, so. Contractual increases are coming. We have new hires coming. And certifications with the new hires, their certifications are a little bit more expensive. Licenses and the wellness expense, every time we have a new hire, that goes higher. Because the legacy, older guys like myself, don't get the, the wellness expense. Annual wellness required. There is a line item that went up over 10%. The education tuition went up, that's contractual due to promotional exams. That was a negotiation between the town and the union for a reimbursement for successful complete, successful, successfully passing the exam. We have several grants that we usually get. In particular, this year, we got the firefighter safety and equipment grant, it was almost $5,000 more than last year. And then they had, it's not on here, because it was, it was later. But we also got a $9,000 supplemental grant. So that's very helpful for us to buy firefighter gear, which is increasingly expensive, so. That is our budget in a nutshell.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add one, the budget that you see in front of you of, of 10 point, almost 10.3 million dollars is netted out $360,000 from the ALS Receipts Reserved Account. So there's another warrant article later in the warrant, as there has been for the last few May's. The fire department budget as submitted is net of that $360,000. I just want to point that out, so when we talk about that article, you'll know that it's been factored into their budget already.
Thank you, Denizio. I'll now go to the board if they have any questions or comments. I'll now go to the board if they have any questions or comments. Well, seeing none, take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the fire department budget as presented.
Second.
Motion is made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstain? Chair votes aye, five zero, approval.
Mr. Chairman, we keep Chief Connerdy here for the next budget, which is the EMS, the Emergency Management. This is a line that we keep separate in the budget, separate from the fire department budget, where they are able, we are, we are able to budget some monies for them to buy supplies to, in preparation for any G, any emergency events. That budget is requested at level funding from the year before. So, Chief, I don't know if you want to just talk about what kind of supplies we're planning on purchasing this year?
So last, last year, we, I believe we purchased some pumps and some generators to power those up. This year, we're purchasing some extrication tools, forcible entry tools. That, we also get a budget, we also get a grant from the state, a matching grant, sixty-five hundred dollars for that, for that purpose.
One of the questions we've gotten in the past is, why do you separate this out from the fire budget? And the reason we do is because of things like the in-kind service that we're supposed to require for certain grants. We're able to point to it specifically to the separate EMS budget, that we use this stuff specifically for EMS supplies, and that is easier for us to track rather than dissecting it from the whole fire budget.
Okay, thank you. Open up to questions or comments from the board. Anyone have any questions or comments? Jimmy?
Clar, quick clarification. This is emergency management, not EMS and, uh?
Correct.
All right. EMS is emergency medical supply, uh, service, but?
Yeah.
Emergency.
Management, right.
Just to clarify there. That difference.
Okay. Looks like we are good. I'll take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the emergency management, uh, emergency management budget as presented.
Second. Motion is made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, abstain? Chair votes aye, five zero zero.
So I don't know if the chair would rather do the warrant articles for fire or continue the department operating budgets with Chief Brown and then come back to the warrant articles.
As well, finish up with Chief Connerdy?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have two capital requests this year. The first one is an ambulance and emergency medical equipment. The ambulance and emergency medical equipment come in at six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Of that, the ambulances, ambulance is five hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred. And then the balance is made up of a stretcher, stair chair, defibrillators, and an automatic cardiopulmonary device.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add, that the ambulance, the ambulance purchase is going to be coming from the Receipts Reserved for Ambulance account. So that count was set up for us to isolate the revenues we get from ALS services, the additional revenues that we get for when we started providing ALS services on our own. And the idea is we use a portion of that, the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars I mentioned, during the operating budget, and also every so many years, we're gonna use it to buy an ambulance. So that, this funding isn't coming from free cash, it's not gonna be bonded, it's from existing revenues collected from ALS services.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Just one quick question.
Sure.
Chairman. Chief, how long does it take to, if you, if this gets approved, that it takes to get an ambulance in?
This one is scheduled between two and a half and three years.
Oh.
The one, we're, we're actually taking delivery of the one later in the spring, early summer. That would, that would have been two years since it was approved.
Thank you, sir.
Just a comment, if I may.
Sure.
I know, this is regarding both ambulance and the command car, but I just wanted to acknowledge Justin Deco for all his work, 'cause he's done some amazing work over there as a mechanic. And I know he's, uh, there was something he did a couple of years ago where saved the town hundreds of thousands of dollars by doing it himself.
Um, I would say more than that, because he's torn down the transmission on the, on the, one of the vehicles, taken apart the engine on one of the vehicles, and then put them back together. He's done two engines on our forestry truck. Both were warranty jobs, but they would not have, we would not see the forestry truck if we waited for, to send it out. And he, I mean, I remember watching my dad, you know, take things apart, and then put the nuts and bolts in, in the, in the hubcap. You can't imagine how many nuts and bolts he takes out, and then they all go back in, and the trucks run perfectly.
Yeah.
When he's done with it, so.
I just wanted to thank him publicly, and maybe you could thank him for, for the board.
I will.
He's a tremendous asset to the fire department and the town.
That's awesome. Thanks, Jim, for mentioning that. Sarah, do you have something?
Yes, I just, just looking at the pictures of the existing ambulance and some of the rot that's happening underneath.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously, to be expected in the weather conditions that we have. When we were going over the DPW budget, there was a line item about some sort of spray sealer. I might be butchering that, but to, to sort of extend the life of the fleet, the vehicles. I'm wondering if there's any similar service that we could do to, to sort of, I mean, you can't fully prevent this rotting in the undercarriage, but like to, to extend the life of it, so it's not rotting so quickly.
So I can, I can speak to that. The Fleet Maintenance Director worked closely with Justin. Ever since we've opened the new facility, there's an opportunity for him to go up there, get an extra set of eyes on him, an extra set of hands when he's operating those big giant machines. But the undercoating is gonna be planned for when we make new purchases. What they put in their budget was to do existing vehicles that we have, to try to see if it's gonna work, but also to add it to when we purchase vehicles, to try to get the undercoating when we buy.
Okay, so that's DPW, but any, any chance we could do that for our, our fire?
Yes, so anybody that buys a vehicle for any of our departments goes through Fleet Maintenance.
Got it. Perfect. That's all the questions then. Thanks, Chief.
Just real quick, Chief, I also see Command Car.
Yes.
We're going for one of those as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
We have two more articles after this.
Do we want to vote on this one first?
Apologies, jumped the gun. Got excited.
Was the Command Car one of the upcoming ones?
Uh, yep, there's three, fire, there's the ambulance, there's the command car, and there's what I talked about, the offset to the?
Okay.
To their budget.
Let's just go, we'll move on to the next one, and we'll vote them all together.
So what?
Okay. All right. Command Car, this would be replacing one of the command cars. It happens to be my current vehicle. Typically, they, we run them for about ten years, and this model is a two thousand fifteen. Its expected life is, is ten years. We're moving we, we have an estimate for either a sixty-nine thousand dollar twenty-twenty-five Tahoe or a seventy-five thousand dollar twenty-twenty-six Tahoe. And depending on if it's on the lot or if it's, has to be ordered. So we went with the seventy-five thousand plus. You'll notice there's additional wiring that they have to do for emergency lights and sirens.
Any questions on the Command Car, Nick?
I didn't have any questions. I just saw.
Oh, you just saw it?
Yeah.
All right, and we'll move on to the third warrant article?
I'll take the third one. That's a transfer from Receipts Reserved that I spoke about, the three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. What we do is, we put a separate warrant article on there to transfer that money to offset the operating budget for the fire department. So as I said, when we approve the fire department budget, it's netted out that three sixty. When we, so when we get to that warrant article, we have to do that to balance the budget. So this would be a transfer from Receipts Reserved to the fire operating budget.
Thank you.
So this is, I think, our fourth, fourth year doing this.
Any questions on this last one? Does anyone have an issue with voting all of these together? With that being said, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the fire warrant articles for ambulance and emergency medical equipment, command car, and Article fifteen, transfer from Receipts Reserved for ambulance.
Right.
Motion has been made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Chair is aye, that's five zero zero, approval. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. All right, we're done with fire. Now, Chief Brown?
Mr. Chairman, as Chief Brown walks up, very similar comments as I had for when Chief Connerdy came up. The overall police budget is relatively flat. Requests for this year, Chief Brown can talk specifically to them, but the expenses, the personnel includes moving everybody forward for a step. It does not include a, any contract adjustments, because those have yet to be made, those, that is budgeted in negotiated settlements. And the expenses went up by eighty-something thousand, that Chief Brown can talk about.
Thank you. So, yeah, just going over the overall budget, again, it's a point two six percent, not including the salaries. The major drivers this year, one of the things I'm asking for is a bump in the overtime of ten thousand dollars. Now, on the budget sheets itself, on page ten, I probably should have put this in under unscheduled, but it ended up in court time. But the ten thousand dollars is to help cover unanticipated costs of overtime related to prisoner transportation and basically watching prisoners if they're held overnight or held over a weekend, because the temporary site will not have a booking room and holding, I'm sorry, will have a temporary booking facility where we can process, but we will not be able to hold prisoners. So they're gonna have to go to Lexington or the Middlesex Sheriff's Office, so we'd have to supply an officer with that. The other area is expenses. There's three areas under the expenses that are going to increase. Number one is contracted services. It's going up a little over fifty-two thousand dollars. The biggest driver to that is gonna be the body worn camera program. As we come into year four on the body worn camera, we knew there was gonna be a bump in the annual support and maintenance and the storage costs, because we were able to get these on a grant, and then helped out through a warrant article through Town Meeting that comes to an end. So basically, we had to put this into the operating budget. This is year one of throwing that extra expense into the operating budget. We also have the annual support and maintenance for Prophoenix, which is the records management system that you've probably remember hearing about ad nauseam. Between us and the fire, we split that annual support and maintenance fifty-fifty. So there's a twenty-two thousand five hundred dollar cost that goes into our budget. We also have an increase in the motorcycle lease and the LiveScan warranty, which is the new fingerprint machine. I'm asking for a thousand dollar bump in materials and supplies, which is gonna cover the extra range supplies and rounds. Because we're gonna have to go outside, we won't have the firing range available to us for a couple of years. I have to add that cost into the budget. And then finally, under expenses is the capital. Once again, for about the fifth, sixth year in a row, the cruises are going up. This year, it's not as bad. They're only going up about seventeen thousand dollars, so I've added that in for the, for the three cars. And finally, the last increase is education and tuition, again, because we're going to be in the temporary station. Sending officers out for the yearly training is going to be, be an extra cost. So we've added in thirty-five hundred for the outside range fees, as well as being able to get new hires trained to the sufficient level, and also potentially an, an increase in the academy costs through the state. So those are the major drivers. Obviously, I can get into more detail if you have any questions.
Anything to add, Mr. Denizio, before we move to the board? Any questions or comments on the board? Jimmy?
Chief, I'll support that extra overtime. I just don't think ten thousand's enough with the amount of detainees we have, and they'll be have, now, I know, if, what, in the past, if we've taken someone to, say, to Wilbur, and we have to physically have an officer there while they're in custody from beginning to end, and I'm assuming that's probably gonna happen again when we're using an outside agency. So just for the board's edification, the, if we take someone in on a, if the police take someone in on a Friday after two-thirty, they stay and they have a warrant or they can't be bailed, they stay from Friday till the next court day, which in some cases is until Tuesday. So that's a lot, and that happens, you know, I don't wanna say frequently, but it happens occasionally, and that's a huge expense to watch twenty-four hours a day for three-plus days. So absolutely support it, I just don't think it's enough. That's my opinion.
I guess I have a question about that. There have been other departments who have been in this situation.
Yes.
And they've had to use another department's facilities. Did you, is there any data, or did you look into what they did spend on overtime for that kind of purpose?
So we just had this same situation with Lexington. They just moved into their new station, and we extended the same courtesy to them as they are going to extend to us. I have not spoken to Chief McLean about his direct overtime costs, but what, and, and, Jim, I don't disagree with you, but in trying to keep conservative with the budget, what we also have at our disposal is the SafeKeep program over at the Middlesex County Jail, where they will hold our prisoners for us. So we're in the, in the process of, of getting that contract signed with the Middlesex Sheriff's Office, which should take, you know, these long weekends that, you know, were just brought up. That should alleviate a lot of our burden. So basically, it's a stab in the dark, but what I did was I looked over the past three years or so of, of arrests and tried to take that data out, although it's, it's, you know, it's an inexact science, but I did my best to kind of, you know, look over the three-year average and extrapolate that out for next year.
Okay. And then, can I ask another question?
You may.
The increase to education and tuition, which I support, I guess I was just a little confused by the explanation for it. Why does moving to the temporary facility require an increase to education? Is, is it specifically for the range?
So it would be for the range. So what will happen, for instance, if we went over to Lexington, we're, we're going to be expected to pay towards those range fees, because obviously they're carrying insurance over there and whatnot, so we would pay towards that. But the biggest driver to that is the hidden costs or the potential costs of the academy increases for new hires. So if we send them to the academy, right now, it's about thirty-four to thirty-five hundred. It may go up over six thousand, so we tried to anticipate as best we could the raise in the fees for the academy as well.
Okay. Thanks. I have no other questions. Thank you.
Who else? So Sarah took mine, so I am good.
Welcome to be in the chair.
I know. I like this. So with that being said, I'll take a motion for the police budget.
We can do all, all the warrant articles as well?
I think we did the budget, and then we did warrant articles together.
Yeah, if you could do the, the operating budget separate, that'd be great.
So we'll take a motion for the police budget.
I make a motion that we approve the operating budget for the Police Department for twenty-twenty-six as presented.
Motion has been made in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain?
I'm gonna abstain from that one, as I'm still associated with the department.
Okay. The chair votes aye, so that's four zero one, and the police budget passes.
Mr. Chairman, we have two warrant articles from the police, item four dash oh one and four dash oh two. One is a replacement of, well, I'll let Chief Brown present.
So the first warrant article request is going through as a rifle and less lethal weapon replacement. So right now, we have a complement of twenty-nine rifles and six of our less lethal weapons. The rifles have been in use since about two thousand two. We have probably replaced two or three of them since then, but depending on who you ask from different manufacturers, a normal rifle manufacturers, a normal rifle is beyond its useful life after about 10,000 to 30,000 rounds. Most of our rifles have seen 80,000 to 90,000 rounds through the barrels. So, what's happening is the year-to-year maintenance has increased. So, five years ago, if you went to the range and started to shoot, it wouldn't be until early afternoon where you started to have jams and malfunctions. Now, on the first round of all these, we're having malfunctions. And that's because the, we're losing everything from the gas rings on the bolts, the bolt mechanism itself. And then, if you can imagine, we're shooting in less than ideal conditions. You could be laying on the sand. You're then jamming a magazine into the magazine well, and you're shooting rounds through it, and sand is getting into the mechanism. So, they've just gone beyond their useful life. Questions come up, well, why don't you throw some into your operating budget every year? But the problem is with everything, the technology changes. So, we wanna be able to train very simply across the board so that if you were to grab a rifle, it's the same rifle regardless of what car you get it off. So, this is one of those things that would come in as a capital expense, and that's why I'm bringing it forward like this. The less lethals, if you've never seen them before, they basically look like a shotgun, but they've got a very large barrel opening at the front, and they are used as a de-escalation tool right along the same line as a taser would in the use of force. We use a 40-millimeter single launcher with an expandable barrel and stock. They don't have expiration dates per se, but the problem is the mechanisms start to break down, and we do a lot of training with the weapon system. Luckily, we haven't had to deploy it against too many people, but because of all the training, they've started to fail and break. So, two of them are out of service right now, and what we're asking to do is replace two and then also buy four more so that all of our line cars and the supervisors are equipped with these. They are a great de-escalation tool, and they also fit into our systems of how we deploy our personnel and our tools on calls for service.
Anything to add, Mr. Denizio, before I open it up to the board for any questions on the two warrant articles? Nope? Seeing none, we'll take a motion.
Comment?
Comment? Sure.
Just real quick, the rifle's long overdue. I know exactly what he's talking about. Mr. Morandi's can concur with that. But the less lethal, the physical appearance of it, just the visible appearance of seeing it, de-escalates. People who are aggressive, it changes minds, let's put it that way, just the mere sight of it. So...
Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I'll bring a photo up to show what we carry, and you can see exactly what Jim talked about. That's what we would be asking to get. The round on the left, as you're looking at it, is what would actually be fired out of it if we had to deploy the weapon. And the one on the right is the practice round.
Mr. Chairman, I'll add that this is just the first warrant article. There's two pieces to it, but there's also another warrant article after this for the AEDs.
Okay, wanna move on to the second one?
Sure. So, the second one before you is for automated external defibrillators. Again, we have right now about 23 in our complement, but again, they've been in service since 2003, so it's time to replace them. So, again, to keep the budget conservative, what we've asked to do is just replace 14 of them at this point and also buy one trainer. The suggested useful life on the equipment that we have right now is five years. They've been in the cars since 2003. But we were able to get them on a grant through Zoll Medical. And what was great about that is if we had a need for software update or new pads or a system fix that had to go on, we could just bring them up there and they would fix them. In about 2019, 2020, we contacted them again to do a final or do another reboot and system update. And basically, we were told, hey, this is the last one we're gonna be able to do. These systems are just out of date. So, it was about time that we tried to get the newer models. So, the newer models are a Stryker LifePak CR2. They're a little more compact. The nice thing is they come with an eight-year warranty. They connect very simply to the patient. The padding system is a one-in-one pad. The current ones that we have now come in together, and they're attached to a center block that can be very difficult to use if you're under stress of a cardiac event. So, these ones are gonna be a simpler padding system. They come with an automatic daily self-test for the updates, so we don't have to travel and bring them up to be updated. As soon as they hit an internet connection every day, they're going to update. The nice thing is all of our cruisers have the modems in them, so they will be constantly updated. There's key event data transfer for the hospital, the ER physician, so the system goes with them, and the doctor's able to upload it right into their medical file and see what was going on. And the best thing about them is they have a child function. So, if we have a child, we get there, put the pads on, we immediately switch the button, and we know that the proper amount of electricity will be used on a child, and we're not trying to deal with that, you know, trying to put the pads on a different way to get the right amount of joules through the patient. The lifespan of the batteries is much better. It's 800 minutes of on-time or 166 discharges. And the standby life for them would be four years on a shelf. So, they're much more durable. And again, they will automatically update. So, we're looking just for the 14 again for the line cars. Some of those old medical ones that we still have will be able to be cycled down that are still in good condition, and we'll put them into the administrative cars.
Do we have any questions on defibrillators? All right, so seeing none, I'll take a motion on the two police warrant article requests.
I'll make a motion to approve the police warrant articles for the rifle and less lethal weapon replacement and the automated external defibrillators.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair is an aye, so that's five zero approval.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you for coming out, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks for the update.
Chief's gonna stick around for our last item, but if we can approve the last three budgets. The next one would be the sealer of weights and measures. The plan is to continue to operate the way we have been the last, the way we are right now. We share a staff member with Lexington. We pay 60% of the cost. They pay 40. That's based on the amount of items in town that they have to measure. And the budget is going up by $562. That basically equates to, we're looking to increase the rate a dollar an hour. So, if you calculate that all out, we're gonna be paying $31.75 an hour. They work, he works 18 hours. We're on the hook for 60% of that. That's where the number comes in.
And how's that been working out as far as sharing services with Lexington? Everything, everything getting done?
Yeah, we get a great deal.
We do? Good. We'd like to hear that. Anyone have any questions on the sealer of weights and measures budget? Anyone need anything sealed or weighted? All right. In that case, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion we approve the sealer of weights and measures budget as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair is aye. Five zero approval. Moving on to tech infrastructure?
So, the next tech infrastructure is sometimes referred to as capital improvements in the budget lines. This is specifically the five-year capital lease. You may remember in January, we asked Town Meeting to approve us to be able to go to five years. So, you have to get approval from Town Meeting to go beyond three years. This is something we do every five years. This will now be the fourth time we do this. And our tech team, along with the schools' tech team, works extensively with our vendors to put together the refresh program for both hardware, software, and cybersecurity. Appliances for the town and schools. So, this would be all telephony here, so all the telephone system. This is all the switches and wireless access points, again, for the whole town. Now, for the first time, we've incorporated the police department into it. So, what's the catch? The catch is it's significantly more than it's been in the past. And there's several reasons for that. Part of it is the program improvement, especially in the area of cybersecurity. We're going to be getting, I forget what the acronym stands for, but SOC. So, it's basically a 24/7 monitoring of our systems at all times by a third party, along with our folks, that will see if they see any trending, any data, any usage that's happened out of the ordinary. Our folks would get an alert to look into that, and it can even be more sophisticated than that. Another piece is it's one of the years where we're replacing the bulk of the phone system. We don't always do that. Those pieces tend to last more than five years. So, that's adding some costs. And five years ago, prices have gone up quite a bit. So, last time we did this, it was, the operating budget was $400,000 a year for five years, or $2 million. Now, you'll see that it's $700,000 a year for five years, or 3.5 million. Additional to that 3.5 million, there's gonna be another warrant article from the school department for some equipment that is specifically in schools. And the reason that's being parsed out of this project and funded separately is because it's an opportunity, because it's just for schools, in order for us to get a federal rebate called E-Rate that only schools are eligible for. The equipment has to be for specific purposes and only in schools. So, the total is more like 4.1 million. So, it's doubled in size than the last time we do this, but we're doing a lot more. We're taking cybersecurity serious, and stuff just costs more. So, Joe and Jose have been doing the tour, going to all the different boards. They've had executive sessions with both ISAC and Ways and Means to get in the weeds on any of the types of equipment or things that we just don't talk about on open session just for security reasons. So, if anybody's had the opportunity to see any of those thrilling sessions, Nick, you may have been at ISAC. I'm not sure if they, yeah. So, that's where they sort of get in the weeds on that stuff. For our purposes, we're here to approve the dollars and not so much the plant.
All right. Any questions about the dollars of tech infrastructure and tech team? All right, I'll take a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the technology infrastructure refresh line item 903 as presented.
Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair is aye. That's five zero.
So, last one in the operating budget, Mr. Chairman, is negotiated settlements. I know, all of you know, having been here for a while, negotiated settlements is where we budget for any contracts that haven't been settled yet. So, rather than put the amount in each of the department's budget, we appropriate a specific amount, and then we have a separate warrant article that would go to Town Meeting that would ask to transfer it from negotiated settlements into each of the departments. So, important to note, the budget that the town has put forward is within guidelines at 4.5% for town operating and school operating. And in the town operating, each of the departments doesn't have their increase in it, but we do factor that increase in. So, as a whole, we meet the guidelines, including a potential settlement. They're just not in the specific departments. So, this number is big. You know, if you look at the percent-wise, it's pretty eye-popping, and that's because that's all five union contracts plus A&amp;P. So, that's everybody in there, the 1.1 million. And as you know how operates, we're gonna appropriate 1.1 million as we approve other contracts. We're gonna transfer it from this line into those departments. So, hopefully, we'll get them all approved during this year, and hopefully when we look at it for next year, it will be, the FY '26 amount will be down closer to zero, closer to that 39 that's existing in there now.
Thank you, Mr. Denizio. Any questions from the board about the negotiated settlement account budget?
No, but if I can, Mr. Chairman, John, this was always the plan, right, was to kinda get all the union contracts kinda cycling in the same timeframe, so we'd have that one balloon year, and then it would be smaller, you know, for a couple of years, then it ballooned back up. That was the plan.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's, you know, in total, it's the same. But yes, I mean, ours do expire at the same time. It's highly unlikely that they'll all settle at the same time, but it has happened. But we will, they will expire at the same time. So, this happens every year with A&amp;P because it's not a union, and they can only do it a year at a time. So, everybody's used to this happening, but the reason it's as high as it is, just your exact point, is that all of our units have expired.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
One quick question?
Sure.
And any, if the contracts don't settle by fiscal year, any retro would come out of this? This is where the retro begins out of?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Looks like we are good. I will take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve, excuse me, line 900 negotiated settlement as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Chair is aye. Five zero. All right, so we're gonna move on to the police station update. All right, thank you.
Can I have, can I ask a question? So, warrant articles, number 8081, that's all set?
I'm sorry, warrant article?
The next thing on the agenda is 081, warrant articles?
Yeah. Yeah, we did them.
We did them.
We mixed in.
Those are all set. There's no others?
We're only gonna do police and fire.
Okay.
Three fire, two police.
Yes. And can I ask your question? This is in our backup, the free cash report?
Yep, just for your, it was in the shared drive?
Yep. It was, it was sort of...
Am I not allowed to address it because it's not on the agenda, or I just had a question about it?
Sure. I mean, some of those are funded by free cash. I would say they're partially on the agenda.
Okay. So, in terms of like the preliminary appropriations from January and then the potential ones for May, it brings our available free cash to carry forward around the 10 million mark?
Correct. So, that's the plan to, if everything were, that's going to make Town Meeting to be funded through free cash if it were approved, that's what we would have unused at the end of the year.
That's helpful. I just, or how do we feel? Are we feeling okay about that number?
Yeah, I think the last few years, we've done a little bit higher because we were planning to use some money for the police station and the Fox Hill, which we did in January. We used $5 million each. You know, we have conversations with the finance team and recommendation, two Ways and Means on where we, where our comfort level is. And that's, I would say that I'm comfortable carrying, you know, eight figures and...
Okay. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Police station update. Mr. Denizio, I'll let you lead the charge here.
Okay, so, Mr. Espo and Mr. Tigas saw a bunch of these at our police station building committee, actually, and Sarah was there too, at our police station building committee last Thursday. What we're trying to do is just kinda share the latest and greatest with the committee, and we'll kinda go over a schedule a little bit later. But this is sort of what the site plan looks like right now. So, you've seen this before, but what this is trying to do in illustration of is you can see it in relation to the other buildings. You can see where the building is gonna sit on the site. You can see how the traffic patterns are gonna work, and you can kinda get a visual of how far into the Sculpture Park property that it looks like we're gonna, you know, it looks like maybe half. You know, we had feared the worst when we first were trying to do the design, but it looks like now we'll maybe need only about half of that. You can see how access in and out of the site will be. So, again, this will all have to go to the planning board for site plan review. But this is sort of where we are now. I know you've all seen this already, but I did wanna share just a picture of it. I'll scroll if anybody doesn't have any questions. So, at the last meeting, we looked at a batch of five different renderings, and I talked about how the evolution happened. We went from the base rendering. We got some feedback that it was kinda plain. So, that led to some changes, not, to some design changes. And as I said, as we went from what we were calling option one to what we had in option five, that also had an A and a B. Architects love doing that rather than just using numbers. And every one, there was a design improvement that was made to incorporate different things, whether it's size or natural light or space in the building. And some of them were different design features like these, I'm not gonna use the term properly, but these pointed roof things. So, those were...
That's the technical term?
That's exactly what they call them, architects.
A faux dormer, perhaps?
So, this was the sort of the latest. And again, resist the urge to hate it based on color, but sort of identify, does this type of design sit well with you? We've asked for feedback from lots of folks to have the board get a better feeling about what folks are thinking. Before, what will happen is this board will make a recommend, will pick a design that will then move forward to planning board to go through their process, not only for a site review, which every project does, but this project is in the town center overlay district, so there's some design requirements that they have to meet too. And this board will be able to see where we stand with all of those when you make a final decision on what gets submitted to ultimately for planning board to bless it based on those design... based on those design requirements. So I did, I did include a couple of different pictures of the same rendering, you know, a side view if we were walking from the front of the building around in a counterclockwise. So we'd be heading down Center Street here. This is sort of the back of the building, kind of plain, like we talked about before, different roof lines. It's got a couple of flat areas. You can see the Sally Port there. As we keep moving our way around, now we're kind of around the corner of the building. We're sort of standing near the library, if you will. You can see the entranceways to the Sally Port. You can see how the parking will be secured with the fence and the gate. And then sort of the overhead, that gives you a picture of the, of the roof lines. And then right now, what is the design for that big hole in the middle that looks like a bathtub is deeper than a parapet, I forget what they call it, but that's basically for the mechanicals to go in so that they don't have to put louvers and entrances on the roof. So this is, that part of the design hasn't been finalized yet, but it's an option that they have. You can see the outbuilding in the background. You can see the library. So this, this one kind of gives you the overhead view of it. So the idea was to let the board know kind of where we are. You sort of have access to all six, well, six options, including the As and Bs of each. And it would be great for feedback from this board and we'll share the feedback we've got. I believe there may have been an email from Mike Carty. I'm not sure if it's made to everybody yet. But we've, we've received feedback at the building committee that you two, feel free to share it. There's been some feedback shared from the planning board that was mostly around building materials, specifically where we have the, let me go back to, where we have this area. I don't know if you can see my cursor, those sort of bump outs. The planning board has expressed they would like to see that brick to sort of match the town buildings. Like if you were going to walk down the campus, the building committee would rather see a transition, sort of how you go from Grand View into those brick buildings and, and something that maybe blends the two of them. I think any of those fit within the requirements of the overlay, but we'll let Lisa kind of guide us through that. But I think it'd be helpful and Mike and Jim, feel free to chime in now, but it would be helpful if this committee has any feelings to share them with Mike and Jim, myself. We can get them to the design team and sort of start directing them on how this board feels. And tough to do without hearing the feedback from everybody else, but we'll get that to you and you guys can talk about the feedback you've heard.
Jimmy, you want to start?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing that's really, really striking about this design is that you won't see any mechanicals outside. Everything is built into that roof line. So you won't see compressors, condensers, or anything like that. That's the whole, that's, that's a great, one of the great things about this design. Again, up in the air, the facade is up in the air, but Mike Carty did want me to pass along, I told him I would, that he'd like to advocate for the facade that'll blend in with Grand View Farm to help preserve the historic character of the common. Blending in with Grand View seems to be widespread opinion in the police station building committee last week and also among residents that were polled. So I passed it on from Mike, but it's progress. We're making progress. You know, every meeting is a little change, a little this. But I think it's going well. It's going to take some time, not as long as MWRA, but we'll be there and it'll come out and I think we run on track with this.
Thank you, Jim. So the gist I got from the building committee meeting was that they want the building to look like it fits in, it fits into the campus. And the conundrum there is Grand View looks very different than the rest of the campus. So I think what Barbara was trying to say in the meeting from a planning perspective is she was leaning towards it more looking like Town Hall and the other brick type buildings. And what we had initially started with was more blending in with, with Grand View, which is where we thought everyone wanted us to go. So that is something we just have to keep in mind. And I think as long as we meet the requirements of the town center overlay, we should have no problems. And we just kind of have to get a consensus on, again, if we want, because they're both look very different, if we want to look like Grand View or if we want to look like Town Hall. And I think we can, we can get there. And Chief, did you have any input on the exterior of the building that you wanted to add or something that we might have missed?
No, I think you've covered it. I mean, I do have a preference. I do like the way that this building looks. I don't necessarily care about the color. I understand that that may not blend in. But a lot of what I've heard since this project went before town meeting was that people thought where it's over that side of Seer Street to blend it in with Grand View. So that's kind of the direction we took with the, with the architect and the design team. But either way, what I care more about is the inside of the building rather than the outside. And everything on the inside is coming out the way that operationally that it should. So.
Good.
Mike, I'll just add again that the color scheme doesn't necessarily set in stone or any of that. The reason that that color scheme was on the latest drawings was because some of the feedback from folks that had looked at, KBA's done a lot of police and public safety buildings. So some folks went onto their site and looked at their portfolio. And some of the feedback was that two in specific born, and I can't remember the other one, look exactly like that. That, that's the color scheme. That's the roof lines. You know, it doesn't match up perfectly. But that's, that's kind of what it's modeled after a little bit on the feedback that, that they heard back. I think that's fair to say.
That's correct. Yeah.
Jimmy, you want to add something?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, another thing to, to keep a nod to the history of the union school, whatever you want to call it. We're looking at, the committee's looking at preserving maybe the wooding beam for display or other parts of the building that can be used for visible displays as a nod to that building. But another thing that came up was to take some of the rocks that create the foundation of that school, that building, and use them for the rock wall or a rock wall in, on the grounds of the new police station as a nod to the foundation of that building. So all those things are in play and all these ideas are coming up, new ideas are coming up all the time. So just a little wanted to throw that they're keeping that old building in the, in the plan as best they can.
Any comments from the rest of the board or questions that you guys may have on any of this? Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for this update. I was also at the last building meeting, so I kind of already had an idea of all of this. John, you mentioned seeing the feedback from others. I would really like to see the feedback that specifically has been given by planning board to the architects. I have a lot of concerns going into this about their concerns, essentially. You know, like, like Chief, I tend to be more concerned about what's inside the building and the services that we're providing and how it's functioning in that respect. So I don't have super strong opinions about the aesthetics, but I know people do. And if that's going to be a huge roadblock, I'm really, I'm really trying to avoid us approving a design only to have it be torn apart as soon as it gets to planning board. They're going to be like, what is this? So I really just want to kind of get on, get on board or at least be informed as to the feedback that they've been given already, just so we don't run into that. Obviously, I want a beautiful building. And, but I do understand that where this is, there has been, you know, a sense of importance from the town that we keep things uniform in some way and there's guidelines around the design. So I want to be respectful of that as well. So that's kind of all I had. I went back and watched a few planning, recent planning board meetings where they give an update on this every once in a while. And I'm just, I'm having a lot of anxiety going into that process that I just want to get ahead of it and make sure that we're, you know, acknowledging their, their wishes. And you can't make everybody happy a hundred percent of the time, but I just want to, want to make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Nick Control, do you guys have anything you want to add?
I agree with what Trevor just said. I've been involved in a lot of these things as far as like the, the station two, both of the DPW buyers, the, all the stuff that's been built in the last eleven years in this town that I've been involved in. And I see what happens that we get here, we, we approve stuff, then it goes to the next group and it gets disarrayed and it's moved on. And we have a really hard time with it. And this is a great opportunity for our board and their board to work together to make sure we get exactly what we're looking for. Now, as far as the building goes, to be honest with you, it is what it is. My concern is that this man and the, the future of Burlington gets what they need inside that building as far as technology goes. I want to, I want to make sure, and I said this about the fire station, I want those guys to have the best technology they can have so that in two months from now, they don't come to us and say, hey, we don't, we need to, we need to run another cable this way. We need to put another, a room over here for this. So that's my biggest thing is the inside of that building is the biggest concern to me. Outside's going to look beautiful to some people and some people aren't going to like it. It's, in other words, I won't say it. But it's, it's the inside of that building that I'm really looking, that I'm really concerned about, the inside, how it's designed, what it has for options for the, for everybody in that building. That's all.
Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not to belabor the point, I concur. I think that function over form is, is the ultimate here. You know, so it's nice to hear, Chief, that you're happy with how everything's laying out and you're getting what you need. I agree with the notion of airing to the side of Grand View for the sake of the blend. I want to make sure that as we consider that though, that we don't make the police station look like a farmhouse. I think that we have to strike a really keen balance here between what's to the left and what's to the right. Grand View will always remain a unique piece in terms of, you know, town architecture, you know, and I, I would hate to push the police station so far in that direction that, you know, we're like, wait, what was the point of what we're doing in terms of the, the design aesthetic? I, I think leaning into the notion of stone is a great idea, you know, and I think that we can also use some of the architectural choices that are on the other side to kind of help create that, I guess, pivot point across the campus. But I would encourage all of us, and not just in this room, to not overthink it. You know, at the end of the day, it's, it's going to serve a purpose to be a police station. You know, we'll do our best to make it fit within the campus of, you know, a multitude of buildings that were built over a multitude of decades, you know. And, and as long as it serves its purpose, I think that that is ultimately more important than, you know, whether it's stone or blue or gray or whatever. So I'm not, not being dismissive of it. I just don't want us to, you know, put all of our eggs in that one little basket. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, one more question if I may, and I apologize because I know we're, we're getting late. John, question in terms of like, once, once we say, yep, this is the one we like and we head to planning, from there, what's the timeline look like?
So once we pick a design and get to, we're, we're scheduled, well, we're hopefully scheduled to get to the planning board at their June meeting. Preferably, we'd like to do a preliminary meeting before that in May to sort of go over where we're at and kind of get some feedback then. So that the June meeting will be the first official meeting where the site plan review would, would start and the special permit that's required for the project would start. We're told that that typically takes multiple meetings. So our original plan was to get to planning board in April. Now we're going to the June meeting, you know, based on design team not meeting certain deadlines. So that's where we are right now. So I, we will likely need to push out our construction documents hitting the street and the design team's working on a recovery schedule for that to sort of say, all right, if you get final approval, a special permit and building permit in July, what does that mean? When do we start digging?
Right.
Because that's the big thing. When do we get out of the ground? If you get it in August, what does that look like if you get it in September? And then what type of things can they do in the schedule to recover some of that time? So we spent a lot of time at our last meeting and both select board members and a planning board member and a chief expressed to our design team their frustration with us not making the deadline, kind of the push. But sort of on our end, it was, don't submit something that's not ready for prime time. So luckily, our planning staff has been great to work with our design team to offer to do the look at stuff before it's submitted. That's ongoing right now. So hopefully, I know they got the picture. They've had to have meetings with the chief and I that aren't pleasant. So hopefully, we've righted that ship and we're going to have a recovery schedule that we can nail down when we expect those construction documents to hit the street and what does that mean to our overall schedule. Luckily, for a project like this, it's not a school. We're not tied to a September opening. We own both buildings. We're not going to be paying rent at a building we're not in. So it's, it's less disruptive for us, but it is frustrating to, to miss a deadline. So.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Just to add a couple of things from the meeting that we talk about every time is, and I know this board is very interested in, we have a placeholder for, to, a reminder about a Butters meetings, you know, get to these people. We have a draft letter that we can send to a Butters to tell them we're going to have an infield meeting at our first building committee meeting in June. So we'll invite them to that. But we'll also want to find out how they want to get their information. Do they want an email blast weekly? Do they want to get it from our project website? Once we get that up and running, how to, you know, do they want to come to the meetings and sort of try to meet them where they're at, as far as that goes? And then the other placeholder is historical so that we don't lose track of. Historical did not vote to demo delay this building and they had some, some conditions for that. And those, part of those conditions was to retain some of those historical that Jim was talking about, whether it's beadboard or original door frames or, that group is not going to let us forget about that. But as long as we have it on and the OPM can continue to work with them and more specifically, when do we get a contractor on board describe how the demo has to salvage these things. But then also to get an idea from historical about how many of these items, where are we going to put them? When are they going to get them and put them to where they're supposed to be going? You know, where are they going to store them? That sort of thing. So that'll be something we'll continue to talk about. But I just wanted to highlight, I know those things I've heard from each member about the Butters and historical. So we have them on every agenda and we'll continue to work on those.
Awesome. Thank you.
To that point, one point was brought up was using the same clock that's in the union school now. And just there, everywhere, the meeting's been very, it's been an interesting process that, you know, everyone is trying to figure out how we can honor the, the union school but still, you know, stay on point with this building. And one thing I wanted to say to you, Chief, is that for me anyway, personally, buy-in from you and the force, I know your focus is what's going on the inside and what you're going to use. But I mean, I want you guys also to be comfortable with the exterior and please push us in the right direction. I don't want to build a building that everyone hates walking into because you guys are going to be the ones going in there the most. So your feedback and your opinion also is very important to me. I weigh that. It's just as important as the planning board because this building ultimately is for you guys.
So with that said, I'll just reiterate what I said at the meeting the other day. Please do not give me a red building or a yellow building. And for the most part, we can work around any other hiccups.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the police station update projects? All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Moving on to subcommittee reports. Sarah, you want to go first?
Sure. So as everybody knows, we recently had an election and we haven't had a meeting since then, right? Yeah. So just wanted to thank our own, well, not our town clerk anymore, but thank Amy Warfield for her last election and her team. And congratulations, congratulations to Mike and Nick who are reelected to this board and all the other candidates who were elected this past election. The only other thing I have is for the Board of Health, the Burlington Community Health Fair will be Saturday, April 26th from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Burlington High School. There will be raffles, various free health screenings, fitness demonstrations and things like that. So be sure to check that out. Oh, and last thing, Monday- Oh, and last thing, Monday, this Monday, April 21st, is Patriots Day, and town offices will be closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe? All good? Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the Public Affairs Committee, Sarah and I met with them last week along with the rec department. We walked, we did that, we walked the two zones that were approved for sculpture temporarily be located common and in front of the town buildings. So Brendan was out there with his spray can with Kelly, and it's almost like a hybrid of a hybrid. We got the, they're all within the areas that were approved, but it also has a walking component to it that crosses onto this, onto Center Street and places a few of them in the, you know, along the buildings. It's kind of a neat concept, I thought, because it's just, does that walk that people want, but it doesn't, you know, it's not overpowering. Everything is on that side of the common over by where the two existing ones are, and then bringing a couple to the side of the street. So my question, I have a question, I guess, if those two zones have already been approved, does this need additional approval or can we just, Brendan's and Kelly are on board, they're the ones that marked them out? Sarah and I were there, the Public Affairs Committee was there, so.
I guess that's a question, I mean, the two people who were against any sculptures of the common, do you want it to come back and, you know, approve the final placement?
I'm going to say no when it comes back, so what's the sense of it coming back unless you want me to just have me say no now? I don't want them on the common.
I'm good.
So as long as, well, like I said, you had to make sure rec was on board?
Actually, I do want it to come back because I can say no on public record again. Well, yeah, I do want it to come back.
If a member does want to come back, then let's bring it back.
All right.
Yeah, I do want it to come back just so I can say no again.
Okay.
That's how I feel about it.
Well, we'll bring them back for final approval.
All right. Lynn, you got that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Glad we got that settled. Okay, Nick?
Thank you, Chairman. Having a good time tonight. Yes, so we had, it's crazy, I think this is the first time, at least since I've been on the board, that we've had a meeting so far away from an election. Usually, we're rolling right into a Monday after a Saturday. It's a pretty wild ride. I'm somewhat thankful, however, that it did work out that way because on Sunday, Jim and I had the honor of attending, why? What are you making of a face?
Oh, I thought you were going to say because you had such a hot time with the election this.
No, no, no. I'm never going to gripe about that. No, Jim and I had the honor of attending the Immie Americans, the Greater Boston, their first unity gala they held on Sunday at the Treasury Kitchen over at Wayside, and it was a great event. You know, folks from all over the region were there. They had select board members from different communities. They had other folks from, you know, it was DEI and, you know, prominent, you know, I would say figures within communities, all kind of representing. And it was just a really nice afternoon slash evening to discuss, you know, just the notion of working together, right? And I think that like, it's nice to be able to take part in these events and to not only remind ourselves that, you know, we are all kind of working towards similar ends, but to network with people who are doing such things in the region and, you know, me folks we might not otherwise have the opportunity to meet. I feel like I haven't given an ISAC report in forever, but really it's because a lot of the stuff that they're doing is behind closed doors. You know, we don't want to be giving a whole lot of stuff, you know, away, cat out of the bag stuff. So, you know, please know that, you know, like Mr. D'Nizio said, cybersecurity, our MIS team and ISAC are working very, very diligently, and I really appreciate ISAC as a committee for being such a well-staffed committee of very knowledgeable industry Two other quick things. One, because it falls under my purview for economic development, this isn't really an update, this is so much as a conversation and one that I hope we get to continue later this week around economic development and, you know, the recent reports of, you know, how high vacancy rates are and the concerns that Sarah and I and John heard from Ways and Means around, you know, asking for certain things like a communications officer, questioning if it was the right time due to the fact that we're going to probably see revenue fluctuations over the coming years because we're seeing such drastic shifts in the way people do business, right, and how we adapt to that. I really think that this board, we really need to try to get in front of this as much as humanly possible, knowing already how much work Melissa's doing and how much work that we already do to plan for financial contingencies. But I do have this, not fear mongering, but, you know, unwavering concern that we're entering into a very unique point in Burlington's history where we really haven't had to want for too much due to our commercial, you know, neighbors, and now we're going to start to see that shift. And I want to make sure that we're doing our best to protect the residents, you know, from massive tax increases where we don't have to. Lastly, something that I kind of bugged John and Paul about is because I had the opportunity to run unopposed this year, I took the time that I otherwise would have been campaigning and thought about some things that I wanted to try and get done over the next couple of years. And something that I wanted to put to this board that I'm going to do, I just want, you know, thoughts on whether or not you want to be there or, you know, dates preferred, is that I'm going to start holding quarterly town halls. You know, where? Not sure. How? Not sure. Topics, things like that exclusion, big stuff that I think residents will probably turn out for, but also open Q and A. You know, because it's something that I want to do, it's something I'm happy to do alone, but I want to, you know, obviously send it to you guys, and I'll make it a posted meeting with the Clerk's Office. That way, if folks just do decide to show up, that it's all well within rights for quorum, and it'll mean a lot. But yeah, I'm going to start doing quarterly town halls, and if you guys are interested or you have topics you want to share with the community, let me know, and we can kind of pick a date together, or I can just pick one and we can go from there. So.
Thank you, Nick. Chairman's report. As Chair, again, thank you for your confidence in me, and hopefully this isn't an indication of things to come for lengths of our meetings because this one's been a long one. I just did want to say with regards to the election that Sarah and I were able to attend the last planning board meeting, and we did bring certificates of commendation congratulating and thanking Bill Gaffney and Ernie Cavino on their many years of service. And I just wanted to publicly thank Ernie for his 42 years on, in town government here in Burlington. He was a wealth of knowledge, and it's a huge loss, and we were very thankful to Ernie, and I'm personally very thankful to Ernie. When I was elected to the planning board in 2019, he took me under his wing and kind of taught me how to be an elected official, and I've always thought back to his old thoughts and lessons that he bestowed on me, and I think it's been very helpful as I've moved forward. So thank you both to Bill and Ernie for all of their service.
Town administrators' report?
Just real quick, one, just sort of the look ahead, what's going to be coming up the next meeting or next few meetings is we're going to continue to review the warrant articles. You were able to approve the index tonight, so that means we can meet and get that out to folks. We can meet the deadline, so there'll be some capital, some financial, some general, and some, you may decide to take a position on some general bylaw or zoning bylaw if the committee, and then the social equity marijuana requirement that we've talked about a few times will be coming back to you on the 20th. And then we'll have Sam Hockenberry back again to dive a little deeper into some more numbers from the municipal aggregation. I think he's planning on coming on next meeting, so. That was it, Mr. Chairman, and you did hear Terry talk about there's a high school building committee on Thursday where they're going to address some of the stuff that came up at the, their last community forum.
All right. I'll take a motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Who's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. 5-0-0. Meeting adjourned.